Into order. Like, take this opportunity to welcome everyone to the November twenty-six, twenty twenty-four Board of County Commissioners meeting. Remember, if you would like to come before the board, please make sure you fill out the form located by Mrs. Rhodes over here in the right corner, your left. Just please make sure you fill that form out, you get an opportunity to come before the board. If you had three minutes, you'll get a, you will get three minutes. Once the buzzer goes off, that would be your time. If you had five minutes, you will get five minutes, and like I said, once the buzzer goes off, that would be your time. Please make sure you state your name and address for the record, please, into the microphone, so we can get it on record. Also, if you have cell phones, please silence your cell phones, or any cell phones going off during the meeting. Once again, we'd just like to say congratulations to these four commissioners on being sworn in today. And with that being said, we'll move straight into the consent agenda. Is there anyone in the public with any questions or concerns with the consent agenda? Yes, ma'am.
Christie McElroy, Woodward Avenue, congratulations to you gentlemen, Port St. Joe. I have one question concerning the Jerry Pate Turf Company and a tractor that is supposed to be purchased for over sixty-two thousand dollars. I believe that's in the consent agenda. What I'm wondering is, was that, did that go out for bid? And the second thing that I want everyone to be aware of is that Mr. Pate is the vice chair of Northwest Florida Water Management District. So I think that's important to note. So I understand he did a sprinkler system for the golf course over a year ago, and I'd like to do a public records request and find out, again, was that bid out? So that's what I have for you today, Mr. Chairman.
All right, yes.
A former state contract, if you notice the rest of the thing, it says to purchase.
What page, what page are we on?
It's page seventy-two and seventy-three, it's a golf course, it's, so, there are not many folks in the golf course supply business, but they're on, this is a state contract type deal, so we go through this cooperative program, no different than the Sheriff's Association or any of these other programs that we have that we're allowed to buy direct from, so. Yeah, so it's per board policy and per the rules, so.
I just think it's important because, you know, Northwest Florida Water Management District gives a lot of permits to the county and the city, and for the vice chair to be doing business with the county and the city. I think it needs to be noted, and also that as we move forward, anyone that sits on these state boards, the public needs to understand that they are on boards that very much impact, you know, the counties and the city. Transparency, we've got two new commissioners and a commissioner husband who is a engineer, and we just want to make sure that everything is up and above board. Thank you.
All right, thank you, ma'am. All right, yes, sir.
Good morning, Robert, excuse me, Robert Branch as well, congratulations to y'all, you elected. One question consent agenda, I talked about this a couple months ago, page ninety and ninety-two, act in Northwest Florida Water Management District to reduce permit application fee. And I found this application fee in y'all's packet, or do y'all have the same one? And it's fees, what I'm seeing, fee reduction shall be approved on the basis of physical hardship or environmental needs for a particular project or activity. If you turn to page two, it's acts of reducing it to a hundred dollar permit. Is that per county, a city, per individual, or as a whole, for the entire county? This one hundred dollar reduction fee?
Thank you, Robert. Clay, I know you've been dealing with this one.
It just lowers our application fee for every permit application we submit to water management from the full fee to a hundred dollars. And that's for Gulf County, it doesn't affect any of the cities, it's just for permits where Gulf County is the permitee.
Permit that the Gulf County, the Board of County Commissioners apply.
That's correct.
Okay, I appreciate that, and in my research, actually, I don't see how that could be a hardship, the way y'all got it worded, because what I'm able to find through the Northwest Florida, I mean, all this is public records, and in the last seventeen years, the county has only been issued twelve. Actually, y'all were, y'all were applying for eighteen, but you've only been issued twelve. So with me saying that, is it per construction activity? Is it, does the price go up, or is it once that fee, whether you build a Empire State Building or a parking lot? How does that work?
You want to answer?
So Gulf County is a small county, and small counties across the state, if you read the top of the deal, it says counties with population of fifty thousand or less on October first of nineteen ninety-four eligible. So it's not just water management, it's DEP and just about any state agency, that some of their permit fees may be ten thousand dollars or a hundred thousand dollars, and they may be greater, but decide, but small counties are eligible to, we don't have to prove a hardship, but just because we are a small county, we can ask for this waiver, and it's a good thing for the taxpayers. It saves us money from, instead of giving the state ten, fifteen, twenty thousand dollars a year for these permits, we get them for free or next to free. Some of those, some of those are waived completely, this one is a hundred dollars.
So if I, if I purchase a piece of property down the road on y'all's county right of way, so I'm not, I'm not getting a reduction fee only to the county? I'm, I could be in a hardship, y'all, y'all making this county, you've got plenty of money coming in, but if it would be a hardship for y'all, it would surely be a hardship for me, and that's, that's the reason I'm asking this question.
I'm asking, I mean, I'm kind of, I'm kind of confused, so you rather for us to pay?
No.
Ten thousand or a hundred?
That's not, that's not, that's not my statement. The hard, the hardship what y'all applying for is per county, he answered my question, I appreciate it, Mr. Chairman, is per county, Board of County Commission, the land y'all purchased, what y'all do, your right of ways, the whole nine yards.
Right, right.
Y'all getting a hardship fee. If I want to go down the road and buy a piece of property on y'all's county right of way, I'm not getting a hardship fee.
But that's.
So that's not, that's, I mean, I'm not going to say discriminate, but I'm under the same hardship. I'm not, I don't, you see what I'm saying? But that's my point.
I understand.
And that's the reason I'm asking this, because it's not worth it.
But that's, that's what, you got to apply to water management, am I correct, to get that hardship?
Correct.
So if you was to apply to us, I mean, you got to go to, you understand, you got to go to waters management, water management to get that hardship fee?
And I've actually looked at the permits on water management from the last, they, they actually show last seventeen, eighteen years, I believe, and y'all were actually the leader, Gulf County is. Now, with that being said, y'all applied for eighteen, according to my records, twelve you've been issued, the other six, they got reverted to DEP.
Okay.
Okay, so, and my, like I say, my statement is, my question is, if y'all get a hardship, the county as a whole, the individual filing for a permit should too.
But, but that's between you and waters, water management?
No, 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 y'all are you, y'all, us as a taxpayer, if y'all going to do this, that should be applied in together, as countywide.
All right, that's your time, thanks, sir.
I appreciate it, and I appreciate it.
Yes. All right, anyone else, questions or concerns? All right, any staff members with any questions or concerns? All right, any board members, any questions or concerns?
Oh, Mr. Chairman, I need to abstain from page sixty-seven. My company does work for this company.
Commissioner Quinn, sixty, page sixty-seven, could you, on the consent, can we just pull that for discussion? I need to get a little more information, if you don't mind.
All right, so we pulling page sixty-seven for discussion?
Just for discussion, yes.
Go ahead, sir, you got the floor.
Yeah, so, I guess Michael's issue with, with, with Monolith, it says we're going to go into a, we're going to lease it, which is, I guess, a good thing, that's the old site there on Industrial Road.
Correct, yes.
All right, so that's where they're putting their company business and stuff like that. Is it, is it a yearly lease now, or, I couldn't, I couldn't get it out of that, what is it going to be, a yearly lease?
It was, and it, and it was, go ahead, Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner, they've had that site, I think, now for three years, Commissioner, and the original lease they negotiated, they would make substantial improvements to that site over the first three years.
Right.
And they take a rent or a lease reduction in rate. They've now expired and used that reduction or that discount, they're paying the full lease rate. It expires next year, and what they wanted to do is, well, under Michael's recommendation, is to extend that lease for up to another thirty-six months, and then subject to appraisal, to have the ability to go out for appraisal and have first right of refusal, which we've also done on our industrial site. So it's a current tenant, it would provide them up to an additional three years of lease on the site right now.
Okay, I guess the reason I'm asking is because that industrial side there, in my opinion, you know, driving it, I think it's getting hot. I mean, we're starting to see some people moving out there, I know Kilgore moved out there, and Coastal, and that place is getting hot, it's like, we got some prime land there, and we'll, so if we do want to go to a purchase, we'll get the, we'll go out and get competitive, I mean, that's, that's going to be, in my mind, if we own that, that's a great place in the future, we're only going to grow that investment.
Yes, sir, the way it's written is that it will be an exclusive appraisal. It says right there, the exclusive appraisal to the county, so it'll have to be acceptable to you five commissioners for the purchase value and the appraised value, if it's not acceptable, then you do not need to sell that.
Yeah, I guess, Commissioner, I was just looking at that spot, that's, I mean, it's really, I think that's going to be a place of growth, and that's, and looking at our whole maps, Doug, you jump in here too, that's, there's not a lot of industrial, except that area that we have industry in, so, protecting it for the future, you know, if somebody wants to move in here, we probably need to be able to work with them, you know, and have, hey, we got this place for you, stuff like, that was just a thought.
Good point, good point. Anyone else? All right, so you're good with?
I'm good with, yeah, I just, I just, now that we know in the future, we can make sure we monitor that, because that's a valuable asset going forward.
Yes, sir, any more board members, questions or concerns?
Chairman, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
On that page sixty-seven as well. Is there a timeframe that appraisal has to be done for our review and our stipulations?
So.
For example, I don't want it done now, and then, as Commissioner Branson said, it gets more dense.
No, so, so, the addendum to the lease will be written, and just so I can express to the commission and the public what it will be done, is we'll give them the thirty-six month extension if you all approve it. The substantial improvements to the site already are permanent fixtures to the property, so you've received the benefit of all those improvements on the site. They want to do additional improvements to the property, those will also enhance the value of the property that you will receive the benefit of, because they're permanent fixtures, they can't take them with them. At such a time, in the next thirty-six months, that they elect to offer to buy it, we'll go out for a fair market value, we'll get our own appraisal, and then the five commissioners will have the decision whether or not you want to sell it, and if you do, you can do it for that appraised value, you set the value of that property, so it won't be any discount, and actually, it will be an enhanced property value by virtue of the things they've done to it over the first five years. So the taxpayers will benefit both ways.
So if we don't, if we don't want to sell it, we don't have to sell it? Okay. Any more questions, concerns, commissioners? All right. All right, any opposition to that motion? All right, motion passed four and oh, with one abstention. All right, Mr. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Help me out, all right. What's the wishes of the board? Thank you, ma'am.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
All right, I got a motion by Commissioner Husband. All right, second by Commissioner Macklemore, all right, any further board discussions, anyone in the public? And we got, and you good with putting sixty-seven back in, okay, all right, yes, ma'am?
Thank you, commissioners, for bringing up that property.
State your name again for the record.
Christie McElroy, Woodward Avenue, I'm just wondering, does it really need to be a three-year lease? Or, and what can the county do if after one year or whatever, is, is there an opportunity for the county to go back and renegotiate that lease based off of growth? Because I think both commissioners brought up very good points. So that's my question, is, I haven't looked at the lease.
I mean, in my mind, the property value increases more than likely over the next three years, the longer they wait to do that, the better off we are, if we do want to sell it. So the worse it is for them over time, the better it is for us.
I agree with that too, because they're doing enhancements to it, so.
Yeah.
And it's going to take a while to do the enhancements, because they have a business on the outside too, so, you know, when you own your own business, it takes you a little while to build it out, so.
Yeah.
I would think three years is a, is a good one, because it's going to take them that long to build it out, and then, in three years, we've got a, an asset that had, they have done it, we may choose to sell it, but we may not, it just depends, you know, what the market does, because I do see that market down there on Industrial really taking off.
I agree with you.
Which is a good thing, I mean, we got it, that's where you want it, planning.
Yeah, I was down that road yesterday, and was overwhelmed by the growth, so, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am, anyone else, one else? All right, any opposition to the motion? All right, motion passed four and oh, with one abstention. All right, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, commissioners, we'll start with page one, she has got a couple of addendums to some grants.
Page one is to request and accept an amendment on the CDBG-DR project for County Road three eighty-seven. We have been working with them, this is a two-part funded project, it's HMGP funded and CDBG funded, and because the timing of those two agreements do not line up, we finally have a path forward with the CDBG side agreeing to make the amendment to make the start date the same as the HMGP grant. So the first one is for County Road three eighty-seven, the second one is for Indian Pass Bridge Elevation Project, those are both those, CDBG portion of those agreements.
All right, thank you, ma'am, any questions, commissioners, on these two requests?
Do we need to split that up on the motion, or?
Yes, okay, we will, all right, so on the first request, County Road three eighty-seven, what's the wishes of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Herring, is this three eighty-seven project, is that to do with the culvert, your head walls?
This is the design part.
Box cover.
Box cover, okay, okay, Mr. Chairman, I'll have to, we actually designed those years ago, so I'll have to abstain on that.
Yes, sir, thanks, sir. Any further questions for Ms. Herring? All right, what's the wishes of the board?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
All right, motion by Commissioner Macron.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Bridgen, all right, any further board discussion, anyone in the public, anyone in the public on this? Any opposition to the motion? Motion passed four and oh, with one abstention. All right, what's the wishes of the board on Indian Pass Bridge Elevation Project Amendment zero three?
Motion to approve.
All right, got a motion by Commissioner Macron.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Husband, any further board discussion on this one?
Question, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Michael, is this just elevating the road itself, this part? Yeah, yes, sir, and once this passes, and the bridge, once this passes, I want to give an update.
Okay, okay.
On both these projects.
All right, any further board discussion, anyone in the public on this? Any opposition to that motion? All right, motion passed five and oh.
So Clay and I met with, Matt hosted EM Director Guthrie and a regional, region two, region one, where's Matt? Region two, meeting last Thursday, and they had a good meeting, but we were able to get him over at our office and, and discuss some of these projects, and, and we're not happy at all the way, the time, that, I mean, we're going on six and a half years. FEMA has, has already completed tens of billions of dollars of projects, and, and not one of our hazard mitigation projects has gotten through the hurdles. So on Wednesday, we had a conference call with the team, that was not very impressive, but, but when they found out we were meeting with Director the next day, it got a little better toward the end. He's going to give us an update on these projects, but the gist is, they, they are adding hurdles that, that are in excess of what the federal government requires for the box coverage, which is a flooding project at, at three eighty-seven, which Howard Creek Road to alleviate the pressure on the north side of the road, get it on toward the canal and the river faster, and of course, the elevation of the road, the latest on the road elevation, again, we've got DOT pledging a ton of money to the bridge to make that a very nice project. We're raising that road about two feet, which is what we need. They came back and said they want us to raise it like ten feet, which makes absolutely no sense, because in a half mile, you've got Highway ninety-eight that's going to be at like nine foot elevation, and why raise it to be nineteen instead of nine? I mean, it just, it doesn't make sense, but again, those are the kind of things that we worked out, and we're supposed to be getting an answer very quickly on that. The important part of that, and what you just approved, the reason that Gulf County over the last thirty years hasn't been able to participate in more of these is because of the match, we have to come up with a twenty-five percent match for these projects. After Hurricane Michael, Governor DeSantis set aside CDBG-DR money from the federal government to match these hazard mitigation projects from FEMA, so Gulf County would have no money in this project, and we're able to get thirty-two million dollars worth of pledged projects, of which, other than design and engineering and, and going around the Maypole, not one of these projects has broken ground in six and a half years. So it's our frustration, but we're still moving forward.
Yes, sir.
Michael, so, six and a half years after Hurricane Michael, we're getting storm, they're not getting a storm thing, so, I mean, that was a point we made when these guys come over here, it's like, hey, look, you know, it's been a while since Michael, and, and we haven't gotten, you said, one project done?
Not, not one hazard mitigation project has been done.
So have we reached out above them, is my, my question?
Well, our first, not to get too big of a hole, but our first appeal was to our water plant, and they turned it down because they insisted, the state insisted, that we build the water plant back at Dead Man's Curve where it existing was. You can't build a water plant in a V-zone anymore, you can't elevate a water plant out of the flood deal. So the gist was, we went to DC, met with Trump's number three guy, who was out of the command then, but was working for consulting. We tried to hire him, wound up that he had a conflict that, that he didn't want to conflict out of, but the gist is, he gave us free advice. So we went back and FEMA agreed with us, and the state still, for a lot of reasons, that project got killed, it was ten million dollars total. It was about seven and a half million from the, from the hazard mitigation, and two and a half million from CDBG-DR. Now, we do have a commitment from Emergency Management to help us get that ten million in the, in the current legislative session, because we need that to finish our water project, but the gist is, that was four years ago, that we went to DC. Clay and I flew up and met with, with the FEMA folks, they said they're misreading it, it is eligible, it was eligible, and we still lost it. So we have really been hot and heavy on this for four years. We had five or six additional projects, our first one was a safe room that was going to be added in the back to the, to the EOC. They deemed that ineligible, after about two years, we didn't want to fight over that, it was like a two or three million dollar project. They wound up later funding one at the Gulf Coast Electric, and we will, it's still not built, but, but, you know, so it wasn't eligible here on the county side, and it was there. So it's been very disconcerting.
I guess it's just something we could, that means be a priority for us, I mean, that's, I mean, we're way down the road on this one, so, and it's not our fault, so whatever we can do, please let us, let us know.
All right, you still have the floor.
Page four, I think.
The next one is page three, we are requesting to apply for the protect grant, we are going to continue to apply for our breakwaters project to, this is for federal funding, to try to help offset some of that cost.
All right, any questions, commissioners? What's the wishes of the board?
Motion to approve.
All right, I got a motion by Commissioner Macron.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Bridgen, any further board discussion on this one? Anyone in the public on this one? Yes, ma'am, come on up, state your name, address for the record, please.
Pat Hardman, Coastal Community Association, one, two, three, Mariner. This grant is to do what with the breakwater project, I'm assuming that's the Cape, Cape Breakwater?
This is for the breakwater structures, the erosion control structures, to see if we can get that project funded.
It's another, it's another part, another plan we're trying to.
Get additional money?
Yes, yes.
Okay, how long will that take?
I believe these applications are to be submitted through February, we don't know their, their awarding date, but.
So we're going to submit in February for something that needed to be done four years ago, desperately needs to be done now, and the funding will not be here during the amount of time that we have to start between now and the turtle season. I don't have any problem getting more money, I have a problem with the timing, gentlemen.
Well, Michael, you want us to go on and talk about the breakwaters now, or you want to wait?
We, we can, if we, if we, if you want to, we'll talk about them then.
Well, I mean, now's good as time, I guess, and, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman.
No, no, go ahead, go ahead.
So we're going to, we need about ten million more, that's, that's going to be the number I'm going to recommend you ask for from legislature to, to finish this project. It's not going to happen in the next few months, it's just, I mean, again, I said it last meeting, unless the good Lord drops a sand out of the air, it's not going to happen in the next few months, but the gist is, it may happen next year. At the end of the day, the facts are facts, we don't have the core permit, we have a, again, hot off the press, we have the biological opinion from the Fish and Wildlife that we got last Thursday. I'm not going to recommend you sign it without a change, because one of it was the end beach driving at the, on that end, and that's, that's a non-starter for, 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 for me, until the board tells me different. The other was that we remove it, which I don't have really a problem with. We're going to have, we're going to have a change in the, in administration coming up soon, hopefully, we'll have a much better working relationship. I think the easiest thing, it was made fun of about us asking, I think the easiest thing would be to get the extension on the time. In fact, we've been told basically that we will get an extension on the time if we ask for it, for, to work in turtle season, common sense, again, if there are no turtles there, and there's no beach there, there's no disturbing that, and we're building habitat, so, so again, I think we're going to be ready in a place. Again, we're, we're still waiting on the core, now we are waiting on the core, but I can't, I can't recommend the board sign the, the, the opinion with, with Fish and Wildlife without, you know, a major change too. So again, we need to get our money straight, prices gone up, we negotiate whatnot, but we're, we're at least ten million short, and I think that's what we need to ask for, and then we still have to work out with these agencies some of the, some of the brass tacks.
So how mu, how much money would you, have we got committed, would you say this time?
Twenty-four is about the best answer, and that, that's just maybe a hair, maybe a hair more than twenty-four.
Okay. Would there be a time that we could, Clay, could we break this project out at any time, if, if we decided to haul the sand, if we get that waiver? Could we contract, could we break it apart, or what's your thoughts?
The way it's got to be constructed is the sand's got to go first, and then you build the breakwaters, but we all know, if you don't add the breakwaters at the end, it's not going to be there.
No, no, okay.
Yes, 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 ma'am.
Can we go ahead and start with the sand while we're waiting on this other to go, we've got twenty-two million, we're losing homes, there's at least thirty to thirty-five homes going to be lost, but by this time next year, if not by spring. And why don't we go ahead and get the sand started, if, I'm assuming y'all are talking about hauling this thing now, and that's going to take a hell of a long time to haul. Go ahead and get started, and at least show some action out there for the citizens, and then we're working on getting the breakwater money. It makes sense to do something now, gentlemen, I'm, I'm sure you all got my, my letter, you, you've got citizens out here that are desperate. Go ahead and start with the sand, work on, I mean, turn us loose, we'll go to everybody we can go to to get some money out there for you. But it doesn't make sense to sit here and do nothing, and it's just not even common sense. So I would like for somebody up there to say, let's go ahead and get started, please, we're praying, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Let me just say this on the, on the splitting it up, we, we do not have that money for sand, we have that money for that whole project, so we can't, we can't misappropriate the money and say we're going to do a beach or nourishment project, and when this was funded to do this breakwater trial. Now, when we get through with the breakwater project, I think it would be the perfect time to go back and, and do a beach or nourishment project. But again, the constraints, last time, the mistake was to cap it, you know, the northern folks didn't get any sand, and there was a lot of heartburn over that, but it was way too small of a project to be effective, but, but Clay's got a quick update, and then I want to, I want to correct some of the things that's been sent, just to, just to, because again, when you, when you don't correct a lie, that gets told too many times, it becomes the truth. So Clay's got an update on what we've done, and then I'm, I've got an update on a few facts.
All right, some smaller.
It's actually page seven in your packet, it's just a breakdown, we went back after last meeting, just to try to put it on paper, all the investments that have been made on the North Cape since two thousand eight, so you see that top number, it's almost forty-six million in sand projects since two thousand eight. So you see that top number, it's almost forty-six million in sand projects since two thousand eight. And then the, you know, the parks and the, the other investments made out the Cape, you see that, the revetment project. All that totals over sixty-two million dollars spent, spent on the North Cape. Again, investments on the North Cape over the last fifteen, sixteen years.
So, so to follow that up, and I mean, that's a staggering number. I mean, again, to say that the, the North Cape doesn't get their fair share, most, most all of our calls are from District Five. And of the District Five, they're not coming to City Port St. Joe, they're coming from the Cape. And again, it is a gem, it is beautiful. We, I mean, I love it and I love the privilege to be able to go to the beach and do what, but, but we're a lot different. And again, I, I like some of these letter campaigns. If they think they're gonna intimidate me or, or whatever, I've, I've got the toughest skin up here. So they can write all the ugly letters and tell them how stupid I am and whatnot, but, but, but don't challenge me on history and don't challenge me on the facts. We got a couple of these letters this past week talking about how much the Cape's worth and how much they pay and they ought to get everything and, and whatnot. And then it's just field, I don't know of a single historical fact in this that is correct. First deal was there's thirty-two hundred and fifty-one homes located on Cape San Blas. On where that number came from, the property appraiser, we, we've got the water system, so we kinda had a good idea. I think I was five off when Don got the number. There are actually one thousand and fifty-two, and that was as of last Thursday. One thousand fifty-two, not three thousand two hundred and fifty-one, so they just missed it by triple. So all of these other facts with the numbers are wrong and whatnot. Then the other deal is that it's forty-eight point three percent of the tax base. And that, that number goes from fifty to thirty-nine or whatever. This is actually the simplest thing. I don't have to go to anybody to get this. As of July one, when the property appraiser certified the roll, the North Cape is nine hundred and three million dollars. That's what it's on the tax roll. The only difference there is, it's a little bit different for the school board, because they don't get the extra home step. But that's the actual taxable value on the North Cape. Of that, at twenty-five percent, not forty-three or forty-eight or fifty, it's twenty-five. And of that, the Gulf front is eleven point five percent. So again, it's important, it's huge. But again, there's nowhere else, anywhere in the county, you can add up every other part of the county, hadn't got a tenth of what the sixty, whatever million dollars that we've put on the Cape in the last fifteen years. Not a tenth. So it's not the fact that we don't care, it's not the fact that the county hadn't put their money where their mouth is, it's not the fact that we haven't put the first money from Restore Act in this deal to match the deal. One other thing, you know, they get caught up with what they're doing in Mexico Beach and what they're doing in Panama City Beach. The difference between the Cape that nobody seems to understand, Pat understands, but most of these folks that have been, been here a long time, don't understand is, when they do a beach re-nourishment at Panama City Beach, the federal government may pay fifty or sixty percent of that project, which means that the local match may only be ten or fifteen percent. Our local match is about sixty-three, sixty-four percent, based on access to the public and whatnot, and the state pays the difference. Federal government doesn't put a penny in. So if they have a twenty million dollar beach re-nourishment at Panama City Beach, their local match may only be three million dollars. We have a twenty million dollar beach re-nourishment here, we're gonna be paying twelve million dollars. So it's apples and oranges. Again, we're, we're on top of it, but, but I stand by my statement. If we just go out and put a sand, we put sand on that beach in twenty nineteen. Where is it now? It's not there. And again, I am sympathetic, as I said, I didn't have empathy. I am sympathetic to folks that make investments. But folks that, that paid the kind of prices in the last two years for some of those places that they're screaming about today, that was just a bad investment. And if we could make it happen tomorrow, I would. We can't just go and use money that was given to us to do this, this growing project, this, this, and experimental, but we think it's gonna work, growing project, feeder beach. We can't just go put sand on there again, because what'll happen? First good storm, half of it's gonna be gone, in a year, it'll all be gone. I could get deeper, but we need to move on.
All right, so we on this Protect grant, we applying for, anyone else in the public, applying for this Protect grant?
Christie McElroy, Woodward Avenue. I don't think people are intentionally trying to lie. I think they're desperate. And if we've already spent sixty-two million dollars over the last fifteen years and we're collecting four point seven eight million dollars in TDC funds for this last year, which is up, I think there are some things that maybe we need to think about. First of all, if you've already invested sixty-two million dollars over the last fifteen years, you need to think about return on investment. That's also very smart. If your clientele out there are doing rentals and collecting bed tax, whatever, that's another return on investment. So I think due to the fact that you've got a sand pit that I think has collected two point nine million dollars out at Honeyville, you've got all this TDC funds, it's not just about enjoyment of the beach, it's about infrastructure. Because if you allow that beach to erode, it's only going to impact the other people on the other side, on the bay side. We know we're losing property. University of Florida came to Port St. Joe and they said that our waterfront at the bay is losing property. But I think instead of, you know, weather letters or whatever is not nice, I don't think it's a form of intimidation. I think it's more of people trying to, you know, get help. And so I, I just believe if, if some of that stops and we really look at the numbers, what's been invested and what would be the best return on investment, and some of these other areas that don't include going out for grants, we might be able to find a solution. So thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, anybody else? All right, yes, ma'am, come on up. State your name, address for the record.
Maria Thomas, Cape San Blas Road. I just wanted to get a little clarification. So for the federal approval, you said we got updated information from, was it U.S. Fish and Wildlife? And what was the provision that they proposed that we didn't find acceptable? I just, the public would like to know a little bit more information about where this is.
The, one of the conditions of the biological opinion was to close a portion of the beach to the public for any use whatsoever.
What portion is that?
The southern end. It's between certain R-markers on the southern end.
So where there are existing properties or?
Not, not private property, the beach.
Okay, so like along the rocks or?
The rocks, yes, ma'am, the southern end down there.
So just that there would not be access at the rocks to beach, because there's not any beach there currently anyway.
A, after the project, there will be.
Okay. And do we have an understanding why they're requesting that? So we would rather preserve that area of sand than to allow the, their provision so that we could protect these thirty-plus homes?
U.S. Fish and Wildlife does not want us to have beach driving. They don't give a damn about the public having access to the beach. And this is more than just the rocks. So in, in a sense, what, what we would be doing is, is building that back and then the public can't even walk or fish on it. So we would be building that back. It would be a benefit to the folks downstream, but, but we would be building that back as a beach that would have no benefit to the public. And that's not acceptable to me. If it's acceptable to the board, they'll sign it, but it's not acceptable to me, so.
I mean, even if that sand is built out, it's not a very wide stretch, so we're, we're gonna throw away that. So it was an approval with that provision?
Where, where did you come up with it's not a wide stretch?
Okay, I, first of all, I, I'm just a, a property owner. I'm trying to be very respectful, but I would just appreciate if we're all, I think it's best if we just try to work together. And I, I don't want to have a debate back and forth or, you know, an argumentative tone if, if I could request. So I, I don't, we don't need to define how wide a stretch is too wide or, or too, not too wide. I guess I'm just saying that it's our opinion or, or the opinion of, of the administration that we would rather keep that segment of beach by the rocks and therefore not accept their approval.
When we build this project, and we will build this project at some juncture, when we build this project, it will be the widest stretch of that beach anywhere on the Cape. Is that accurate, Steve? It won't even be close. So we're not talking about a tiny beach or whatnot. We are talking about a very, it's gonna be built in, in my simple math, as a feeder beach. It's gonna be much wider there, because we know that, that, that sand travels north. So again, we're gonna build something that's massive, that's gonna be bigger than anything from, from the rocks all the way to the state park, actually, all the way to the tip of the point in the channel, that's actually in the channel now. And then the public's not gonna have any access to it. That's not acceptable to me. Not when we're spending, fixed to spend thirty-four and a half million dollars if, if our math is correct. That's not acceptable to me.
So it's not just the beach driving they didn't want to allow there, it's any access at the rocks that they didn't want to allow?
Correct. Although the beach driving would be enough for me, but, but it's any access, no public, which boggles the mind.
Mr. Chairman, could I just add that I would like to also caution the board that if we did something like that, when you start limiting public access, you also then limit your funding, because it is based off a percentage and that is based off your being public access. So you would then have a dominant effect on funding.
And then where is the NMFS, the National Marine Fisheries approval? Have they issued their biological opinion or, or decision? No. And they're still just going back and forth. I guess it was my understanding from the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers that they have thirty days to respond from the time that the Army Corps of Engineers submitted the application. And it's been close to a year. So how is it that they're allowed a year when there's, by law, I believe, supposed to have thirty days to respond?
I'd, I'd love to know the answer to that. It's, it's one of the frustrations as a staff we run into on every project with Army Corps. And I, I don't know the answer. One, one is they don't answer to anybody.
So who is our contact at, at National Marine Fisheries Service? And what, what is the last point of contact or communication we've had with them?
The ball is in their court to submit their opinion to the Army Corps.
And so who is our contact at National Marine Fisheries Service?
I can get you that contact after the meeting.
Okay, we can't share with the public, because we have a lot of interested property owners?
Just be more efficient to give you an email address and a phone number after the meeting.
Sure, okay. All right. And then I guess also regarding starting with the sand. So this project, step one, you just stated, the step one is to put the sand out. So why is it breaking the intent of the project by starting with the sand sooner?
Because we don't have the money to build the whole project. So if we spend all the money on sand and don't build the whole project, we hadn't done what we said we were gonna do and what the funding was for.
And those folks will want their money back.
So how much would the sand cost?
The, the rough and tumble is, and we can't break it down, because again, it's so many variables. But the gist is this, it, the, the, the breakwaters are about eight or nine million dollars in rough terms of the total cost, in rough terms. And that is very rough, based on a, a similar project that was done just to our west. That's the best numbers we have, about a hundred thousand dollars, excuse me, about a million dollars apiece. So the sand's gonna be twenty-four and a half million of the thirty-four and a half million rough term.
So we, we do have enough to start with the sands. So if we think we're gonna be successful in getting this additional funding, and we keep saying now that we're gonna do the project over the summer, then I guess I don't understand why we couldn't get started with the sand, since we do have the approval from the DEP. We have an existing approval.
Let me say this, Mr. Chairman, but, so if you do go ahead and they say we do go ahead and move forward with the project, and then we find out that we don't get the, the other funding, now we done spent that twenty-four million dollars, which they said that, which we said we was gonna spend towards the whole project on breakwaters, now, now somebody has broke the law.
Well, and we, and we still lose the sand. Sand goes away, just like it has. And we're, we're no, we're no better off than we were without the breakwaters.
Yeah, I mean, it's not gonna go away in a day, but if we think we're close to the approval.
But, but, but I mean, nineteen was the last re-nourishment, correct me if I'm wrong? And what, two years, three years? Majority was gone.
Yeah, I, I think if you don't have a break, if you don't get those breakwaters out, if we don't get those structures out there, we, I mean, you're just throwing, all you're doing is putting sand on the beach and it's going right back into, it's gonna go right back into, I mean, I mean, uh, I mean, we, we want the project to move forward. Like I said, it seems like our, our hands are, are kinda, are kinda tied, too, but we want it to happen. But we still don't want to just put sand out there and then don't finish the project. And all of a sudden, now twenty million dollars of sand is back in the ocean. I mean, that's, that's, this is wasted money.
Understood. And then regarding our plan that we need ten to twelve billion dollars additional funding, is, what is our plan to get a successful bid? Because we did put a request for bids out to three companies and received only one response. So what has been done in terms of contacting the other companies? Or what's our plan to approach receiving bids that are, you know, because those previous bids have now been rejected?
I think you said we're gonna ask for additional ten million.
Oh, but I mean, we don't have a company that will do it for any cost right now. So I was just wanting to clarify what our plan is for putting it out to bid again and how we could maybe get some more bids or what our plan is with that.
What, what's the plan going forward?
Till we get the money, I don't think there's any, need even wasting anybody's time and attention. The other deal is this, we didn't advertise to three companies. We advertised to anybody in the world that wanted to do it. There's just, that's just the, the logistics of the dredgers. Our thoughts are that, that there are other possibility. If we can't get that, we're not paying forty-eight million dollars. That's not, just not gonna work. There, there will be potentially other bidders, again, with the haul deal. And it's not gonna take three years to haul it either. You just add trucks to the bill. I mean, we, we know what it takes to haul. It's, it, again, it's not the preferred method, but, but we can do that in a, in a nine or ten month process if, if we haul it. But again, if you don't, if you take the dredgers out, there are other people that will haul. Anybody can haul sand, got a dump truck. And, and then contractors that could put those berms in.
I'd say, thank you for coming out this morning. I know it's a, a lot, lot to digest. As, as a new person sitting up here, I know, Commissioner McMoR, maybe you are, too. We, we're trying to soak it all in, because, you know, Commissioner Crone's been dealing this and saying, y'all, y'all been dealing with this for a while. And they have, we're trying to catch up with it. We, the good thing about it is, I, I'll show you this, is probably the person, if I ever wanted to know anything about beach re-nourishment or how to build on the beach, he's sitting right here. And so when these things go forward and, and, you know, they got expertise in that. I think one thing I would like to see, and I, I think I'm hearing, if I'm hearing you correctly, it's amount, Michael has a great history of, of what's gone on. Clay is staying on top of this, I'm telling you. But we may not get it out there. I don't know how we can do that using technology. How do we get the word out to you as we go forward with this? He's been doing his homework, believe me. He's, he's full of, he knows what he's talking about over there, but then you haven't asked the questions. I'm thinking maybe Technology Board. How do we put maybe a little website or, I don't know, something, whereas Sherri's getting these other grants, that's a good thing. She's trying to double up the grants, so we don't have to pay as much. Talked about long-term, I saw in your letter, you talked about what's a long-term plan. Well, we talked about this, Cobra. I mean, Cobra is restricting us. We do have a change in administration, so looking long-term, how do we start with the long-term in mind and work back to where we are? Yeah, we have a crisis out there, we understand that. So we have both long-term and short-term thing. If we can use technology to keep you informed, that's probably something that would help, is that, if that's what I'm hearing you say.
That would be wonderful.
You're asking the questions and, and it, I mean, I'm sure we got some staff that can do that. I mean, to, you know, to kinda keep us, it keeps us up as well, you know, what's going on with, with that. So like I said, thank you for coming out this morning and, and sharing that with us.
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to express that I'm here on behalf of many Cape San Blas property owners. Many are not able to be here today and we're all very concerned. We have two houses that are already condemned. We have ten more condos that we'll be discussing, I guess, at some point. We're concerned about their longevity as well. And then we have twenty plus, twenty-five more homes that would be protected immediately by these breakwaters. And then, of course, the downstream effects of that new sand being kinda washed and protecting other parts of the Cape. We're very reasonable people. We've been trying to be patient, but this, you know, has been going on for a long time. I understand it's a very challenging project. But I, I know we submitted the application back in twenty twenty-one. So, and there were all the studies that led up to that, so it's been going on even longer than that. I just worry that these, some of these solutions sound great, but even if the Cobra is approved, it's something that might be like a year or multiple year type of solution. So it's not gonna be soon enough for these homes and these property owners that have saved up their hard-earned money and their dream is to come, you know, vacation here. I don't think it's gonna be fast enough. So what can we do in the short term? What can we do over the next six months? As property owners, we don't feel like nothing is acceptable. And we're, again, we're very reasonable people, but you're putting our backs up against the wall. We can't sell the homes. We can't protect them. What, what would any of you do if you had a home in this area? What would you want? What would you want done?
That's exactly what you're doing.
Yeah, yeah.
That's what, I mean, we, we believe it, that this staff is doing what they can do. But we do have a history of what can be done. It's not like these are people who have not experienced this over a lifetime. And so I, I look around the table and I assure you that, yeah, it is our job to hold them, staff accountable, and they do, they're doing what they can do. I know you may not feel that way, but they are, and so we will continue, it's not like we're gonna stop, stop at this, you know, we're, we're gonna try to prove this extra funding here, and we're gonna try to look for different ways to, uh, he's exactly right about the Corps of Engineers, and it's just not this project. And I'm not trying to disparage another governmental agency, I'm not doing that. But they are a nationwide company and, or organization, and they just don't automatically just listen to what Gulf County has to say. They have a, a thousand Gulf Counties sitting on them, so, and, and it's not acceptable to us, it's not gonna be acceptable to us, and we're gonna continue, I'm sure, to do that. So to, to answer that, know that we are looking to do everything we can to mitigate this situation. Mr. McCrone, I mean, I need, you, you've been dealing with it, I.
No, I appreciate you, Commissioner, I, I, I wish we could start the project tomorrow, I, I promise you, and, and I wear Clay and Michael out about it every other day. And, uh, and initially, how long have we been working on Cobra, Michael?
Twenty years.
We, we've been hammering, trying to get the whole Cape taken out of Cobra, we were successful on one little area, and, uh, and, and to go along with what Michael said, if, if we had the federal funding to go with the state funding, it would, we, we would done be down the road. We, this project would be going now. But without that federal funding, it, it, it handy, you know, the last re-nourishment, Dr. Pat went and got the taxpayers to vote to tax theirselves, you know, because it had no choice. But where we're at right now is, with that Cobra in place and not being able to access those federal funds, it, and I, I'll give you an example, what, what year was it, Michael, with it? The hurricane that we put in, I think, cost us fifteen million dollars of re-nourishment because it was in Cobra. We would've got the beach re-nursed, uh.
Sandy, I believe.
And, and it's just been ongoing, it's been a battle, it's been a fight, and, and I wear them out every day, and, and, and but far as knowledge, the Minister Dr. Hammond and, and, and Clay Smallwood, I don't know if anybody has more knowledge about what's going on down there, and, and like I said, I wish we could start it tomorrow, it's not that. And, and I sympathize with you, I do, and, and, uh, but we're, we're gonna, I, I still believe we're gonna get there, you know, I.
The problem is it's not gonna be soon enough for some of these homeowners?
I hope it is, I hope it is, I have to say that, so.
And, and please, please don't take our non-actions as nothing's being done as far as the board goes, just from my perspective. And Commissioner Bridger said it earlier, there's really nothing, and I'm very good at word crafting, um, I'm pretty sure there's nothing disparaging that we can, that we can't say up here, it's not, not gonna upset a jurisdictional agency. So we have to be very careful on our end as well, so please understand that from our perspective as, as, as well.
And are there any opportunities for state funding or state emergency funding that would help us move it any quicker?
That's, that's what we're, we're trying to. USDOT right here is offering to, to help, and that's what we're trying to do, yes ma'am?
Okay, okay. Um, yeah, I think more information would be helpful, I tried on a number of occasions to reach out and I don't always receive a reply. There is a website that I think M, MRD put up, and the last thing that that said is that we got the DEP approval in May and that we'd be starting November first, so as a property owner, and I think the public is shocked because we've had no information other than the fact that it was going to start November first, twenty-twenty-four. So more information would really be helpful to keep us informed of what actions are being taken, what the responses are, and what the next steps are, that would be really helpful so that we feel like we're knowledgeable about where things stand.
We'll get that work, we'll, we'll work on that for you, make sure we get that.
And, and MRD is one of the most well-respected firms, I think Clay would second me on that, but, um, in the, and not only in the area, but in the country on what we're doing here, so we have full, full faith in them as well. So Mike Nebraska is a great guy, and he's a very, he's probably the most knowledgeable person along any Florida beach that you can ever imagine.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, ma'am, appreciate it.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
Can we capture her name? We, we were not able to understand what she said.
Yes, ma'am, come on back up and state your name.
I'm so sorry.
Maria Thomas.
Maria Thomas, thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, we got a, a motion about for the protect grant? All right, come on.
I think.
State your, girl, state your name again.
Pat Hardman, Coastal Community Association, one-two-three Mariner. One, one point, uh, that we, we can go out and try to get money, we've got twenty-two million, twenty-four million in the pot, twenty, I'm sorry, twenty-four, twenty-four million in the pot. What is wrong with having a concept of, uh, a gap loan that you don't have to take right now, but be ready to take if you have to while you're getting the grants? So set up a, that you, for the powers that be out there, you've got a gap loan, this is a mon, this area is your money-making area. Mitch Burke gave us the numbers that were used, that I used, okay? And forty-three point eight percent come from the rocks to the state park.
That's just not factual.
I just got the new numbers from Mitch last week.
Okay, this was in June.
Okay, last week he gave me these numbers, twenty-eight point four percent.
All right, I'll come back and check them out again, okay.
And, and I think if you look close, that's the school board numbers.
This is his writing.
Well, he, I, I can show you on my, my text.
This is the certified, that Gulf County just did, Ju- July one, the certified numbers, and it's nine-hundred-three million. They've broken out by the bayfront, excuse me, bayside, Gulf front, and interior, the MSTU, that is everything from the rocks.
That's the MSTU.
That, that is correct, and, and it's one-hundred percent, and the fact is, it's twenty-five percent, all of those together, but the Gulf front's eleven-point-five. So again, that is less than the, the increase last year of total taxable value. So again, the, the, the problem, Pat, is this, do you want the county commission to vote, these, these five commissioners to vote, to be on the hook for another ten million dollars that we may or may not get, or on the hook for the entire project that we may or may not get, to benefit a small segment of the population that has already got sixty-eight million dollars in the last fifteen years?
And brings in a large portion of the monies, and it's, it's, they can't protect themselves.
Yes, they can, okay, that, that, that's one other thing, and again, without being non-empathetic, is this, when the county set the erosion control line in the late two thousands, okay, before we did the original beach, the public that owns property on the Gulf can rebuild to that erosion control line forever, they can go back at their own expense, at their own expense. So every one of these property owners that are in danger can put their beach back to where that erosion control line is, it's in the law. So again, to people, and we all wanna subsidize investors at the Cape that are in dire need, and again, there probably, I agree with you, there's probably about thirty that are in dire need.
More.
There's thirty that are in dire need, okay, but the gist is this, that is a massive price tag. We have spent more on that one particular area, again, than all the other districts combined by a long shot.
The county has not, the people out there did, I, he's right.
The county matched dollar for dollar this last time, did we not? Every dollar y'all put up, the county did.
Did.
We did.
I thought it was state.
The county put up a third, the state put up a third?
Yeah, it was only a third, Dr. Pat, yeah.
I stand corrected.
Yeah, that's, that's all it was.
Okay.
And, but, but, but listen, we, we gotta get, we gotta get past, uh, and being antagonistic, Dr. Pat, because, what I'm saying is, we, we have spent sixty-two million dollars, we care about the Cape, if we didn't, we wouldn't. It is very valuable, it's, it's the most valuable part of my district, what I'm saying is, we have spent the money there.
But you got, it's like any other infrastructure, it's never gonna quit, so there's gotta be.
The erosion is never gonna quit, and, and, and.
It's slow it down is what you're trying to do.
Even this breakwater is experimental, is experimental. We don't know what it's gonna do.
But you can, you can come back, the money that you would borrow, you could pay, and TDC can pay for beach erosion, beach re-nourishment, a dozen other parts of the state, TDC can pay for beach re-nourishment. That could be the payback of your loan that would give you that gap loan. You would have that coming out of your TD sends, that are, that are generated from out there, so.
I, I can tell you this, Dr. Pat, and I've had people tell me, and I'm gonna tell you, in, in Port St. Joe, you better not ever borrow money to put sand on that beach, I've had people tell me that. I, I'm just being honest, so.
Their, their income comes from out there.
Well, some of, some of it does, but there's other.
I'm trying to say, there's gotta be some solution just to sit here and do nothing.
We're, we're not sitting here, I thought we were trying to tell you, Dr. Pat, we're not sitting here doing nothing. These guys have worked, I, I'm telling you, they work on this project every week. I mean, you can roll your eyes all you want, but I'm telling you, they're not.
I only got one eye, you're right.
I'm sorry, excuse me, but what I'm saying is, is these guys work on these projects, this project, they're not, they're not sitting around doing nothing.
Okay, all right, thank you, I'll let go there.
All right, thank you, ma'am. Got a motion by Commissioner Crone, second by Commissioner Bridger, all right, what's the wishes of the board? All right, motion passed, five and O. All right, Ms. Herron, you still got anything else?
Yes, sir, page four is to request an extension, um, for the wastewater treatment facility project. That is to, hold on, I lost my page, sorry.
All right, any questions for Ms. Herron on request to extend agreement, twenty-two SRP nineteen?
That's just to allow us to meet the deliverable deadline, to push it out to twenty-seven.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, sir, motion to extend? I got a motion by Commissioner Bridger.
Second.
Second by Commissioner McCrone, any further board discussion on this, extend this agreement, or anyone in the public on this agreement? All right, any opposition to the motion? All right, motion passed, five and O.
Page five's a budget amendment, the last budget amendment for that last year?
Yes, this is the last one for last year, this is just line item adjustments within a grant.
All right, any questions, commissioners? All right, entertaining motion approved.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Husband.
Second.
Second by Commissioner McCrone, any further board discussion? Anyone in the public on this budget amendment? Any opposition to the motion? All right, motion passed, five and O.
Chairman, we'll skip to eight, on page eight, Jeremy's got a resolution.
Commissioners, last week, Chairman Quinn chaired our Health Trust Healthcare Committee Group. And at that meeting, uh, we have a sunsetting resolution where in the last four years, our sales tax have doubled in terms of what's generated, and Sherri provided them an updated report, um, it was very positive. And our collective public group between the hospital, our health, uh, department, the county commission, the cities, and our public members at large all voted unanimously to extend the resolution of support to the county commission EMS for continued indigent support of the transports. They pledged another hundred fifty thousand dollars a year from your sales tax, beginning next year, um, for additional five years, um, which will carry you through, hopefully, the two thousand thirty-one year, when you'll have the final pledge paid to Sacred Heart Hospital from that sales tax. Right now, you have about four million dollars in that account, um, from your sales tax, that's used for that support of the hospital. And again, that resolution was passed unanimously, so we'll, Sherri's gonna incorporate that into your budget for next year, and I thank Mr. Quinn for his assistance.
Thanks, sir, we need to go ahead on and approve that.
Yes, if you would, break a vote to accept that.
Uh, any questions, commissioners?
Yeah, I'd like to just piggyback on that, you talk about return on investment, didn't I just read something where they got an award, big time award, two awards, and Commissioner, maybe something that we recognize them at our next meeting or something for that good work? Because that was supposedly.
That's a good idea.
A big award that they got, and that's, that's good for our community, healthcare, right down it.
Yeah, I appreciate that, Commissioner, um, Kelly Beach from the hospital came and actually reported to the community that, um, throughout the entire state, they've gone five years without an infection, that's been incurred in the hospital. And also in terms of the care that they provided, um, to our patients and citizens in the county, no one has received additional injuries from their residency at the hospital, which is unheard of, to go five years in that term. So they continue to receive awards statewide for their care of our citizens.
Yeah, yeah, and Beach did a great job, and she, like she, Mr. Novak says, she announced that, so I, I think we may need to reach out to her if I.
We can invite her to.
Yeah, invite her to, and just, yeah, recognize her for it. All right, a motion to, uh, accept this resolution for the Health Trust.
So moved.
All right, motion by Commissioner Husband.
Second.
Second by Commissioner McCrone, any further board discussion, or anyone in the public on this Health Trust? Any opposition to the motion? All right, motion passed, five and O.
Page nine, uh, memo from me to you, uh, to allow staff to use best, best management practices to determine the foundation for the water plant in White City, and indemnify those engineers that did those studies, specifically Magnum and Dewberry. This is an attempt on our part to save a million dollars.
Any questions, commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I'm abstaining.
Are you gonna be involved on that?
I'm involved on the foundation only, that's the only part.
Okay. And that's, Michael, that was just to make it more, more feasible for what we're doing with that, right? Just a brief comment on that one.
So the tank that we're buying, half million gallon tank, and including the, the, the pad that it sits on was roughly a million dollars. The company that, Aqua Store that's gonna build that tank, and I think it's right, Aqua Store is gonna put it in. The foundation under that as designed was one million, one hundred and fifty thousand dollars, they included concrete piles and whatnot. We, we have a different way to skin that cat because the, and, and the brass tax is, the, the report from Magnum said that worst-case scenario, that over a twenty-five-year period, that it could settle five and a half inches. So we're gonna do that a little bit differently, if the board approves it.
Yeah, I just can't vote on it.
I know you can't vote on it, but you're, you're our expert, are you good with it?
Sir, yeah, so the, the geotech report, we, there's, an, an engineer can't go against the geotech report, so that's the, that's the biggest issue here, so that's, that's the overall problem.
All right, any, any more questions?
I guess, I guess what I'm trying to say is you're fine with the change, we're gonna be, the road we're gonna be going down.
Yes.
I mean, what we're gonna, we're gonna try to consolidate the site and load it beforehand, and try a few things is all we're, is what, is what we're trying to do. From an engineering standpoint, if we, if we can consolidate that prior to the initial loading, then there's two types of settlement, there's basically instantaneous settlement, which is not instantaneous, but it's construction-type settlement. Same as a floor trust on a house, uh, it's gonna sag when you put the load on there from the construction. Soil is really, really no, no different, we can overconsolidate that soil, and we wanna try that first, and we have the, the load that we need to get on there to see, and if, what Michael and I have talked about, if we pump water, then it's not a good idea. So if we don't, then it, it may, may, we may be able to, and plus, we'll be able to take that consolidation, that five inches of settlement that the geotech report calls for, and go ahead and get a per, a more, a majority of the percentage taken care of. So it's a trial and error, trying to save a million and a half dollars, more or less.
I'm fine.
All right, any more questions? All right, what's the wishes of the board?
Motion to approve.
All right, got a motion by Commissioner Bridger, second by Commissioner, uh, McMoR, uh, any further board discussion? Anyone in the public? Yes, sir, come on up, state your name and address for the record.
Robert France, I'll be brief, y'all, y'all talking about millions of dollars, used to be thousands, now it's millions, and, uh, all this money going around. And my only concern is, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Husband is abstaining from this due to his engineering project, so why could he give y'all comments to, uh, try to justify y'all, y'all was voting on this? He should not give public comment on this, and that's all I have, that's, but, but I may be missing something. According to, uh, not the Robert, you, the conflict, he should never have even give y'all his opinion, appreciate it.
Mr. Chairman, I just wanna respond, I was not trying to sway the vote in any, any manner whatsoever, I was simply trying to explain, Commissioner McCrone asked a question, and I was trying to explain, I have, I have zero ambition to have any, uh, more, I have enough problems of my own already, I'm not trying to make problems, I'm trying to help. Uh, so that's all I'll, I'll say.
I asked for Commissioner Husband's opinion, and I, I, I have full faith that Jack would give us a, a fair opinion regardless, and not try to sway one way or the other.
Mr. Chairman, can I?
Thank you, but I, I believe I had a, I have a valid concern of this conflict.
You stated your concern, Robert, you do, you do.
Okay, and, and you did too, I appreciate, I appreciate, you did too, appreciate that.
I don't know, it's just me, I, I'm just, I'm still kinda confused. Because I'm, I'm thinking he trying to save us a million dollars with what he just said. Am, am I wrong?
Yeah, no, no, you're not wrong.
Okay, 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 all right.
Mr. Chairman, if I can, on the conflict of interest, each commissioner is from time to time. Mr. Chairman, if I can, on the conflict of interest, each commissioner is, from time to time, in a small rural county, will have a conflict. It's come up historically, the last fifteen years, you've all filled out the proper form, and it will continue to come up. If a commissioner abstains from a vote due to a conflict of interest, it's wholly appropriate. And the right thing to do, under the state statute and under the form and the code of ethics, is to abstain from the vote. Now, you each were elected based on your backgrounds and your knowledge and your expertise and your training, your education, your community involvement. It is also wholly appropriate that each you commissioner be able to comment on topics that come before you, because that's what the constituents elected you to do. So when a commissioner comments on something, as you were just asked, it's appropriate for them to bring their background to comment on it. As Commissioner Husband just said, he's not trying to sway a vote. He's abstaining from the vote. But if he's asked a question from his years of experience in forty-five plus years, he's gonna participate. And that is appropriate under the law and under the code of ethics. So as you move forward and you all have to abstain from time to time in this small community, you can do that, but you also can comment from time to time if you have a background or a knowledge of something.
Especially in this, when we, basically, we didn't take the engineering report. So that's, that's, or the, the price was a little steep on it. So a way to save it, he's got no dog in the hunt, but he is an expert at that. Before we do take that, now what if we did end there and we just said, well, I think we can do it ourselves? I wanna know about it too. You know, I kinda wanna know his shot. That's what he does.
And I, I respect what you say. He is an expert because he's an engineer. But what if he wasn't an engineer? Or we still gonna take his advice? Appreciate it.
The reason we take the advice is because he's an engineer.
Apologize for bringing it up, but this is the other gist. The, the, the thing that I'm asking has absolutely nothing to do with Commissioner Husband's engineering. It's the geotech report and the geotech report only. I think Magnum did that report. It has nothing to do with that. So even though he has worked a, a small percentage on this project, this has nothing to do with him or his firm, so.
Alright, thanks, sir. Thank you for clarifying. State your, state your name, please.
Kristi McElroy, Woodward Avenue. In two thousand and seven, when Port St. Joe went to build their water plant and had to come off the aquifer and onto the canal system, there was a two thousand and seven report with, that was much sourced. It included Northwest Florida Water Management District, et cetera. It was clear that, that Port St. Joe and Gulf County needed to do this because the aquifer was not sustainable for growth. That was our only choice. Now, what I would like to know, is there a similar report that we can access as the public concerning this project that is as well sourced as the one in two thousand and seven? And if there is, could y'all please just lead us to where we would get such a report? Because I've been very interested and read page by page that two thousand and seven report. And I just wanna make sure that here, we also have an opportunity as a public to go in and access those kinds of documents. And, and believe me, I, I appreciate Commissioner Husband's. I think when we ask questions, we're, sometimes it's taken as, are you trying to be controversial? When in actuality, maybe it's just a good thing that you go ahead and voice this because there are many people that will be watching this that may have similar questions. So if we just go ahead and go through it, then there should be no harm, no foul. So is there a report out there that, that the public can access on this White City? Through Northwest Florida Water Management District?
Is there a report?
I, I don't know what report she's talking about. Where her statement is wrong is this. There was no problem with the aquifer for, for the city getting off. They wanted them to go inland and off because of saltwater intrusion, and they refused to give them more. They refused to give them more capacity to draw down from the aquifer on the coast. They chose not to. They pushed them towards that. They have also told them, as recently as three months ago, that they're not gonna renew that surface water. So the city of Port St. Joe hopefully will wind up either teaming with or doing their own. Then the county will get back on groundwater that the public actually wants. It's a cheaper and better water.
Actually, I've put that report in with the clerk before. And so to say that I'm wrong when I've read the report and, and been out there, with all due respect, if you haven't read the report. And this is again where there's no need to say these things. I'm just asking a question. And the simple question is, is there a report that the public can access in order to read more about this project?
Not, not that we know of at this time.
Thank you.
Anyone else? On this? Any opposition to the motion? Alright, motion passed four and oh with one abstention.
Last thing I have at this time, Mr. Chairman, Ms. Norris and the county attorney can give an update. We had a meeting with the two cities and the school board. Oh, I apologize. We'll come back to six. That's not, not the last thing. Ms. Becky, you wanna give us an update and then we'll move forward.
Okay, yes. Thank you, Commissioner. We met last week with the city, we were all, Port St. Joe and the school board, about going forward with the web-based advertisement process. And it, I can say that the meeting went very well. They're, they seem to be on board with moving in that direction as well. And we, we do have a few more things that we have to get through to make sure that we meet all the criteria that the state demands of us, but we are working in that direction. I think we're gonna take a modified approach going forward. We're not, we're just gonna start doing it on a date certain. We're just gonna ease into it, give our vendors and our public time to get used to it, so.
Thank you, ma'am.
That was a great summary, sir. Can't add to that.
Oh, you want me to say something?
No. That nailed it, yes, sir.
You did a great job, yeah.
So I guess we need the sense of the board to move forward. Our, our joint group that actually did go well, and, and they agreed to pay for part of the cost, was that we would do this slow and roll it out in, in January, if that's what the board wanted to do, and do all the appropriate advertisements. The county cost to start this program is eight thousand dollars. And the cities and the school board are gonna contribute the extra cost of two thousand split between them. Is that basically the case?
Yes, sir. I think that's, gets it pretty close.
So we just need a sense of the board if y'all wanna move forward with this. And, and again, it will give us more options. Our problem is this, we're not trying to stop all newspaper advertising, whether it's the Star or the News Herald or whatnot. But on certain things, we can't meet the deadlines because there's only two days a week that the News Herald allows. And of course, the Star is only once a week. So this would allow us to have the option on things that were timely to get advertised. And again, it wouldn't roll out all at once, but we would, we would go start the process, if that's what the board wants to do.
Yeah, and from that meeting, I think, from the, from the first year, we're still gonna, we're still doing the regular.
Could do both.
Yeah, we're doing both. And until, and see, just to see how this, if this gonna, if it's gonna work for us before we move forward with the, without the newspaper.
Yeah, the platform seems very efficient and easy to manage. And so, you know, we were impressed. Leanna was impressed. So that's, that's a good thing.
I actually attended the meeting as well. And I appreciate you looking for this because I think we're one of the first small counties, right, Commissioner Quinn?
That is correct.
That's going after this. Larger counties are using it. And what I got out of that is they're using it because of transparency. And it makes the process a lot more transparent. And it will take us, like, Michael, ensuring that we do it where we still have both going for a while for the people that are not on it, to give them a chance to use it. They did make the statement that it's gonna be the easy, you know, the goal standard of one click to where you wanna get. And it's gonna be, I think we said, one to two at the most to getting the information. Because a lot of times when you get these people, they don't wanna, it takes you five clicks to find what you're really looking for. And this, it's an ease for a citizen. You know, I think of my parents who are here, you know, eighty-nine, they're still keeping them off Facebooks and stuff. But, you know, those type of people that are accessing this, we want them to be able to access this. And this program will allow them in the future to do that. So thank you, Becky, for, for looking for this and putting us in this little light. It's almost like a trial we're doing, so thank you for that.
Yeah, I think the statement, I think the statement was, this is a whole lot easier than Facebook, so.
I can't comment on that because I'm not a Facebooker. It is, it is a easy process in the demonstrations that, that we've been through. And we already use some of this kind of stuff for ordinances and minutes. And even maps in my office are out there. It's just a click and it takes you right to it.
So if it's the will of the board to move forward, we'll, we'll do that and bring that back probably at the January meeting, if that's good.
I'm good with it.
I just have one question, Mr. Chairman. Clay, you feel comfortable being protected?
So we're not gonna do electronic bids at this time. This is just for the advertisement, if that goes well.
I'm just doing license or standpoint. I just wanna make sure you're comfortable.
Yeah, bids will still be received the same, open the same. This is just the advertising portion of it.
But we did get, look into the bid part of it also. And then, Ms. Norris, you wanna comment on that?
Yes, to, to use this exclusively, you will have to do the bid portion. That is a, one of the criteria that the state has set. But we're not going all the way in that direction. Now, we're gonna do both. So we're gonna work into that bidding process. But it will mean that the bidding process will, can happen the same way. We can open electronic bids here. But it doesn't stop you from taking the traditional paper bids, and they're all turned in the same way. So if, if, you know, we have a local that's not comfortable submitting or uploading their bids online, then they can do it the old traditional way. We will do it, we can do it both. Does that answer your question about?
Well said.
Yes, ma'am.
Alright, Ms. Hammond, you got anything else?
I forgot number six. And that's the last thing I have at this time.
Page six, Mr. Chairman. It's the last change order to close out the Rutherford Street project. They're finished with that. It turned out to be a really nice project. This is a decrease of nineteen thousand, one hundred seventy dollars and forty-five cents. And that's for your approval.
Alright, thanks, sir. Entertained the motion.
So moved.
Alright, move forward. Got a motion by Commissioner McCrone. Second by Commissioner Pridgen. Any further board discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I'm abstaining. Our company did the CEO on this project.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Anyone in the public? Anyone in the public? Any opposition to the motion? Alright, motion passed four and oh with one abstention. Mr. Hammond?
It's all ahead of us.
It's good, alright. Board business. Alright, Sheriff, you got anything, Sheriff?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Just real quick, not trying to rush past Thanksgiving. Hope all of you have a great Thanksgiving.
Thanks, sir.
End of the week. But Friday morning starts a, a new thing. It's Christmas. And we're starting, of course, with the sheriff's office for our annual toy drive and raise money. Our idea is, last year, I think we were somewhere around three, three fifty, three hundred and fifty children that we were able to take care of with toys, clothes, and putting food on the table for the families. So I just wanna encourage all of you and for the public out there watching this to contribute into that. We'll be accepting for the next two weeks monetary donations. It can be done, tax deductible through our GCSO charities. Also, we'll be accepting in toys, unwrapped toys. And our distribution date's somewhere around the seventeenth or the eighteenth of December. But I hope to put smiles on a lot of kids' faces out there. And for the public, again, can go to our app. We've got, through our Square app there. They can go and do online donation there. We'll accept monetary donations there as well as the toys. But looking forward to a big year. We always partner with the community. They do a great job of entrusting us to take care of the kids. And look forward to another big year. So we just wanted to pass that on to you for now.
Thank you, sir, for, for all you guys do. Like I say, you put a lot of smiles on a lot of faces, so we really do appreciate that. Thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Ms. Norris, you got anything? You good? Good. Alright, alright, board business. Mr. Husband?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just wanna wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving coming up. That's coming up this week, so hope everything goes well for everybody over the Thanksgiving holiday. Please be safe. First of all, I'd like to congratulate the new commissioners on their new positions. So congratulations to you guys. It's a lifelong achievement. So I also believe it's time to nominate a chairman. And I would, I would present to the board, if willing, Commissioner Quinn, if he could stay in his spot, and Commissioner McCrone be the vice chair, would be my argument here today for the twenty twenty-five Board of County Commissioners.
Alright, I appreciate that, sir.
I'll put that in the form of a motion.
Alright, got a motion by Commissioner Husband. I appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
I've got a little discussion on that.
Yes, sir.
So I can't think of anybody better to be chairman and vice chairman that, coming into this, to tell you the truth. Sandy, I was at a sad thing, a funeral, in a gym with thousands of people. And there was a common presence in that room that everybody in this community felt. So I can't think of a better person. You know, your, your skill set is so good and common. And, and, and Assistant Chairman McCrone, you've been on here a long time. You've been in the battle. So I definitely, discussion is great. Glad, I hope y'all do it again.
After the day, Chairman Quinn. Oh, I, I do appreciate Chairman Quinn, I tell you. And I, sometimes I get too passionate about my, and again, Dr. Pat, I apologize. I get passionate about, about our discussions. And, and, but sometimes when you see, I, I know how hard our staff works, especially on this project. And, and it just sometimes rubs me the wrong way when people don't think they're doing anything. And, and once again, I apologize. I am passionate sometimes. And Chairman Quinn has a better set of skills when it comes to that, so.
You see all these gray hairs?
Yeah, yeah, look at, look at here. Yeah, yeah.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Husband. And thank you, Mr. Pridgen. I really do appreciate it. Prayer. Yeah, a lot of prayer. A lot of prayer. Like I say, and like I say, I believe we gotta, we gonna have a fantastic. I think next, next, for you guys, next four years will be, gonna be fantastic. And like I say, you getting in, you gonna get your, get your hands into it, and you're gonna see the great things that. You already know the great things that are going on, and you're gonna come up with great ideas that's gonna, gonna help push this community and this Gulf County father. So I, I, I'll be glad to, like I say, stay in the chairmancy. I appreciate you guys. Like I say, I don't take it lightly. All I do is, I'm just representing all of us. And the only thing, you know, some days, they be like, oh, you gotta speak, you gotta say this. And I'm like, you gotta speak this time. And so I really do appreciate it. Mr. McCrone, you owe us a speech because all four of us was there yesterday. So before you leave, you need to, you owe us a speech to the staff.
I think I've done enough already, I'll be honest with you.
So thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I appreciate it. Thanks, sir. Alright, so we got a motion by Commissioner Husband for the chair and the vice chair. Second by Commissioner Macklemore. Any further board discussion on this? Alright, anyone in the public on this? Anyone in the public? Any opposition to the motion? Alright, motion passed five and oh. You still have the floor, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
And congratulations to you as well.
Thank you, sir.
We met with the DOT earlier this month. And on the Stone Mill Creek and Seventy-One and County Road, Three Eighty-Six and Seventy-One intersections. Everything from the meeting was very positive, and they're going to help us identify the best solutions for those two intersections on the north end. We also wanted to mention, and I'm extremely sorry to say, we lost a very nice lady, Ms. Gwen Hardy, on November the twelfth. She was walking across Ninety-Eight, coming back from the beach. And since then, I've met with DOT multiple times. There's gonna be a new pro, a new milling and resurfacing project along Ninety-Eight and where the crosswalks are. So they're gonna have new lights, and they're gonna have the rectangular reflective flashing beacons as well. That's the correct term for them, but it's the same exact one that we have at Veterans Park, where you cross the road there. So there's gonna be multiples. There should be, I think, three in St. Joe Beach and three in Beacon Hill, I believe, but don't hold me to that. There's six or seven of them. So they will all have light, they will, on the new project, they will all have lights. And they will all have the reflective flashing beacons as well. So please be careful. On the Overstreet Community Paving Project, we do have good news. We're gonna get started back on December the fifth. Finally got word back from the contractor on that. On the Old County Courthouse, I've done some research, and I've found somebody who's recently placed a building on the National Historic Register. So I'm waiting on a phone call back from them to see what it actually takes. And I'll work with Aaron as well and see if we can get a grant to perform that work as well.
Can I add one thing, so?
Yes, sir.
We are gonna reach out to Dr. Dunn, and we go to Washington DC in reference to funding to help with the, with the courthouse. So I just wanna make sure we keep that on, on our radar.
Yes, sir. We'll put that on the list for sure. Thank you. I would also like to thank Ms. Carolyn Husband. She actually donated some extremely nice Christmas decorations for the old courthouse in Weewee Hitchcock. So thank her. We picked those up yesterday morning. We're refurbishing those, and we're gonna have those put up here shortly. Gun range on Twenty-two, corners are being staked from the surveyor, and we'll start clearing soon. I did want to mark, if you will, um, on County Road Twelve, we have a couple of issues out there. I'd like to, to get with you on that after the meeting today, if you don't mind. Um, our other public works and maintenance items, we're trimming, uh, Three Eight-six right now with the mower max, looking very good. Um, we're working on a survey at Chapel Lane that's supposed to be done here shortly to help resolve some drainage issues we have there. Mr. Raymond has worked at the Weetapoe Creek Fire Department and also the Dow Keith Fire Department. And, uh, I have not noticed any standing on the monuments from, since we switched over to the well at Veterans Park, so that's all good news. So, that looks great. Um, the streetlights in Williamsburg and Freeman Rouse Road will be, we've got four of the five up, one more will be up by tomorrow. So, I was hoping to get it done today. It may be done today, but not a hundred percent sure. Mark also has the, and his guys have the golf cart ordnance, ordinance signage up as well. And the last thing I have is a question for the board. Um, we've got a, a pretty severe litter problem, um, on County Road Five. And it seems, I, I try to travel that road as often as possible. And we have a Burger King and a Subway in Weewee. And there's Chick-fil-A, there's McDonald's, there's Arby's, there's everything but Burger King and Subway bags out there. Um, so, one would have to assume that that trash is coming from Panama City and going to the prison to go to work. Do y'all, and I'm not saying that anybody's doing that, but that's just my only assumption. Would y'all mind if, if I were to ask the warden to do some sort of adopt a highway program where if they start cleaning it up, they might not litter as much? And do some discipline? Uh, uh, if, it's an idea, if you don't like it, I sure won't do it, but I wanted to bring it up and announce that publicly.
And I'll go ahead and say it because I've done it for years. It is the prison, it is the people that work there that throws the trash out. Because I used to take a work crew weekly and pick it up. What the answer is for that, but you said you didn't want to say it, but you did say it.
Well, it's common denominator, it, it would tend to be that. I'm not saying that, my mom lives at Stone Mill Creek, I'm not saying she doesn't go to Chick-fil-A on her way home from Panama either. Um, so, but if that's something that, if, some, some sort of idea to help with the litter problem on County Road Five. And I, if y'all don't mind, I talk to the warden, or Commissioner Michael Moore talked to the warden, one of us, um, that, that would certainly, it may, it may help and it may not, but it's something, we can deal with the couches, where the two places, they always dump them there, we can, we can deal with that. Um, there, I don't think that's going to stop. We've done everything in the world to try to stop it with signage and opening the transfer station at Weetapoe. Uh, we've done everything in the world to try to stop it. So, but if we can get the, the smaller things are really a, a real nuisance, it's becoming a, a real nuisance. It's, it's almost embarrassing.
Yeah, go ahead, sir.
Uh, Jack, thank you for that. Uh, we have it on Saint Joe Beach as well, and it's, and it's not the residents there, it's the people that are coming over, working in construction. I've watched them. Uh, it's not that, they, they would come into your neighborhood and throw it out right there in your, your yard. So, it's something that we do there. Uh, you mind if I call my wife up to talk about the doctor road? She's going to hate me for this. Come on up, Lisa. She has done a doctor road, she's started that process, because I would like to do it. We talked about doing it on Ninety-eight, and you're wanting to do it up there. It might be something for our county, you know, if you have a, a troubled road. What's, what's the process, if you don't mind?
Ms. Pridgen, go on, state your name before we get you on record.
She's going to kill me after this.
Lisa Pridgen, Windmark Way. Um, it's a long process if you're an individual. Randy and I applied fourteen or fifteen months ago to get a little stretch on Ninety-eight, and that's for the state highways. Um, the process to do a regular road is a lot more simple. So, there, without backtracking, I've been contacting, and I've talked to Jeremy a little bit about this a long time ago, the Keep Florida Beautiful Group, um, and I actually went to their conference a week or two ago. They do a lot of adopt a road, adopt a trail, adopt a portion of the beach, um, to really get the local people involved in picking up. So, what you're talking about is more of a specific target area. So, the, um, correctional facility could work on their part. The construction company, you can partner with different construction companies to do a workday, to come out, to take some ownership in the things. Eastern Shipbuilding would be a great, um, opportunity for that, because we have two hundred and some people coming every day from Eastern Shipbuilding. It's a little harder for the littler companies, but if you get some people to take some ownership into those little bitty pieces, it makes a bigger impact in the bigger areas. So, um, the state roads, like I said, a little more complicated. You take a two-mile stretch and you apply as a neighborhood, as a business, as a whatever. And it's basically a twice-a-year that you do an actual program, and then you do some sort of other maintenance things. But there's a lot of opportunities to do it, and there's a lot of ways to get Gulf County people involved and also other municipalities involved. So, I'll be happy to share some more information about that with the board.
I think it's a great idea.
So, so, I guess the question is, uh-
We could, we could probably have a county road cleaned up. The process wouldn't take fifteen months, I, I can assure you, but if they're willing to do it. But, um, if there's a way to do that, if y'all don't mind, I'll just talk to the warden and see what he says, as long as y'all are good with it. I just don't want to do anything with the warden that-
They get the signs and all that kind of stuff out there, is what they do.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, all right, thank you very much. I'll do that next, next month, before the next meeting.
You still got the floor?
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir. Commissioner Pridgen?
Thank you. Um, first, I'd like to thank Clay for the time he spent with me in my truck, riding around District Three, and we've got some things to do. And, uh, he's, he's already started with that, with, with some of those projects, and thank you for Clay. Sylvia as well, some of the parks that you've done. And for your, uh, open house you did the other night, it was, it was nicely well attended. And, uh, so those are some things, thank y'all for, for getting off the, off the grounds, going wide open. Uh, with that, we talked about the Windmark DRI, and can you talk about that a little bit? So, what we've got is, is, uh, in, in Windmark, if you haven't been out there lately, they have cleared a huge swath of land. And so, what I'm going to ask staff to do, Clay, and, and I guess we're going to have to go with our, uh, whoever's doing it with the city permitting. There's a magic number, correct, Michael, Clay? And I can't see how we're not hitting that magic number now, where that construction out there stops until there's a bypass road. So, I left six thirty, I left Beaches Fire Department at six thirty last night. You would think on a Monday night, six thirty, there's not going to be that much traffic going that way. It was a steady line. Mike, you talk about traffic, buddy? There was not a break in traffic all the way to Industrial Road, the whole way. They were all coming out of Saint Joe. Now, that road, I don't know what traffic engineer did a study before, but let them do it now, because it's going to, everybody that drives, drives that road knows how bad it is. So, can y'all update us a little bit about the DRI and what we need to do? Like, it needs to be front and center.
Always get to be the bad guy.
Yeah.
So, so, they're not over in houses, but they are over in, uh, in lots. So, when it was set up, you know, the sixteen hundred and sixty-five, I think, was the, was the total number, and that included now Windmark Phase One, Two. And I think it's like a hundred and ten, again, off the top of my head. So, somewhere around seven sixty-five is the magic number. Uh, so, they're within about two hundred of that magic number. And the, and the DRI that the county kept control of after the annexation, and even when it went away, the county kept control of the actual DRI. So, this board will have to be the bad guy, because it says in there, and I think you have a copy of that piece of paper, that no permit shall be issued. That's the, that's, that's not may, it's not can, or what it says, shall not be issued, uh, once they hit that, until the, the Back Beach Road is in there. And it doesn't say until the Back Beach Road is in there, it says until the, the, uh, traffic, whatever, 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 whatever. That's already over. And again, a lot of things is, is added to that problem. You lower the, the speed limit in Mexico Beach for four miles, or whatever that is, that adds to it, because it backs up. When the city redid the traffic in the, and, and again, a lot of us hated that when they took the four lane out. So, if you're at Cape Sandblasts and get in a line of cars, and gets backed up at the stop sign at Ninety-eight and, and C thirty, you, you can't pass, basically, you can't pass safely or legally until you get to the tendle stretch. So, you, you're backed up coming off the Cape, and you're backed up all the way through the city of Port Saint Joe that used to could get around slow cars. And now, all the way through Saint Joe Beach, there's a little part in Windmark, and you take your life in your hand if you try to, to pass on that. But again, it's double line the entire way, uh, through the beaches. And again, it's thirty-five well out past to that gas station on, 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 uh, on the beach. So, Saint Joe Company knows it, DOT knows it. When we met with the secretary here just about three weeks ago, he knows it. Uh, first time in a long time I got a price, uh, uh, it was sixty million, sixty-five million dollars is what they, they say that's going to cost. They have most of the right-of-way purchased, and, you know, the design was done way back when. And in theory, it would have been completed by twenty-eleven or twenty-twelve. They kicked the can, but, but within two years, barring some massive change, we will hit that magic number. And, and it's got to stop. The law says it's got to stop. And unless this board does nothing and just kind of winks and nods, which I don't think is anybody that wants to do that, uh, they've got to get moving. And if they start moving now, it's not going to be done in two years. It can be done maybe in three or four. Uh, but, but again, we talked about funding and, and potential things. We left, the secretary was going to look for some more money, but we need to be lobbying hard in this legislative session to get them to put the money in and get it in, get it in the program, because we don't need it to be in the five-year program five years down. We need it to be in the five-year program two years down, because we're coming up on a, a hard no pretty quick.
So, Michael, so, you're talking about legislative session, is this, this is going to be a Saint Joe Company legislative asker, right?
No, actually not. And again, it, it, it's faded over the way. I, I think initially, the thought was that Saint Joe had to participate in this when they first did the DRI. And we're going back, all the way back to two thousand and three. Okay, so it's been twenty-one years. Uh, they gave right-of-way, they did some swapping, you know, the county got the road and then gave it back to Saint Joe that, that now that, you know, that's the, uh, old abandoned Highway Ninety-eight when they did the back road. I don't think there's any doubt in DOT's mind, whether it's the big secretary or the district secretary, that, that, that DOT is on the hook for this back, Back Beach Road now. And when I'm saying Back Beach Road, it is behind Saint Joe Beach and behind, uh, Mexico Beach. It's the Phase Two and Phase Three. They built Phase One, which was when they abandoned Ninety-eight from Highland View to Saint Joe Beach. This would go behind Saint Joe Beach and behind Mexico Beach and come out somewhere around that gas station, uh, on the tendle stretch. Across Three Eight-six near Harmon's, uh, that's where the second phase would end. And, and, but again, it, it will not, it will, it will technically meet the requirement of the DRI to do the second phase, but it's not going to do anything other than dump all that traffic out of Three Eight-six. And so, it's, you've got to build them both.
That's right. So, so, we're watching those numbers, so we got to staff somebody doing it. That's what, that, that's my point, is, is, is we need to make sure we got someone with a ticker tape, folks, that, that's saying, hey, you got three more to build, and then, then it's time, you got to stop it.
So, yes and no. We're watching it at a twenty-five thousand feet. We're not watching it, but we will. Uh, you know, we know, we know when it's coming, but what I would suggest is this. Sometime in the first part of the year, we need to have a, a workshop with the city to talk about a bunch of things. And I think we're, everybody's working better together recently. We've been doing a lot of things together, and so we want to continue to work on water, wastewater, all these kind of things. But we need their buy-in, but where we don't get in a, in a ugly contest when it comes down, because there's going to be some crying and gnashing of teeth when, uh, Saint Joe can't sell any more lots, D.R. Horton can't build any more houses, and, you know, and again, the way it's written, it's not just affecting Saint Joe and D.R. Horton and the city of Saint Joe. You have, there are not a lot, but you have private landowners that have owned property in there for twenty years that could get caught up in this too. Because it's, there's, there's, there's no respecter of, of when it's triggered. It's when they get to that magic number, there are no more building permits. And that could be a Phase One lot owner. That could be a Phase Two lot owner that, whatever. It's not just going to affect the, the big boys.
Mike, I, I'm glad you said that. That hasn't come out yet. I'm, I'm glad that you brought that point out, because there are some unbuilt lots in there, and people are selling them every day. And it, that's why I say it's, it's on us to make sure that we have, hey, we, we, you're within five, folks, everybody needs to know it. And I, I, I just think it would be wise on our part to, to really put that front and center, because it's, it has a lot to do out there. Okay, uh, thank you for that. Board, you, you got me on, it's bad out there, it really is.
It is.
Uh, I, uh, boards that I've come from before, and I want to talk a little bit about that. There was a process that was probably the most beneficial to, to the boards that you see and to staff. And it was a retreat, and I talked about this a lot. Um, I called it a retreat, because some people use it as a retreat, and usually you do it in January. It's basically a planning session where we, we're all new together. Sunshine laws kind of keep us from, I can't pick up the phone and say, hey, what do you think about this? And that's a good thing. But it does limit us in kind of seeing where our priorities are for our districts. Because you, you know, we've been out on the campaign trail, y'all have all been in your campaign trails, you've been in your neighborhoods and all that, and you know them, but I may not know them. And I don't, I don't, I would like to know, you know, you know, what, what's your strengths and, you know, what's your, what's your goal for twenty-five and moving forward? Set, setting that for our board. What do you guys think about in January, us having that? It's, it would be, and, and Counselor, would you please jump in on this, the process? But it would be basically our script. We write the script. We won't be voting on any business there. It won't interfere with our January meeting, anything like that. But it'll be where we set priorities, it's open to the public, publicly noticed, probably not in this venue. I would say we would probably find another venue somewhere where we would meet, if that's possible. And come up with some things that we have for twenty-five, you know, our, our, our top list, and, and just get to know each other a little bit better. What are the thoughts of the board on that? I mean, would y'all be up for that? I know it's, it's, it's busy time in January, but we're hitting the ground running. It'd be, I just think it'd be great for us to get together and do that first part of January, you know, hit our neighborhoods, hit, hit our constituents in, in November and December, double check what, you know, what priorities are, and then let's sit down and kind of hammer something out. What do, what do y'all think about that? Any thoughts on it?
You want to say something before we discuss this?
Yeah, the commissioner had mentioned in, in our initial discussions, and, um, it's certainly something that other municipalities and entities do, uh, kind of a reorganization or a workshop. So, uh, in terms of sunshine, it just needs to be noticed, it needs to be recorded when you all get together, just like any other time under the statute. So, you certainly can have it in another venue if this is not, um, the technology of it all. But, um, you certainly can do that. It, a workshop, you don't take any action, you just share your thoughts, and it's a think tank, so you certainly can notice that. So, under sunshine, those are the only two requirements that would, we'd have to accomplish as staff, and you can certainly schedule that for whenever you'd want to do that.
And I was just saying, and, and staff doesn't, I mean, I remember sitting through them, folks, and we were, we got it where we would just, if we were called, we were called, hey, we need to see you there at ten o'clock and stuff like that. So, you, you know, if we had something, we would, we, we could reach out to them. Michael, you could have staff there and say, hey, you know, about nine o'clock, we want the building department there, we want planning, we want public work, you know? And so, you don't have to spend the whole day there for us, but it's basically, you know, we, we, based off what we turn in, we could turn it into some entity. I guess we could turn it into you, Commissioner, what we wanted to talk about there, and then, you know, those kind of things. Just, just a thought, I'd, I'd love to see that happen, because I think it would be productive for us next year going into it, that we're, we're looking at, you know, we got it set. I know it'd be, we, we would be for many.
Uh, what's your thoughts, Commissioners?
So, this will be like a workshop setting? Um, I, I'm a hundred percent okay with it, as long as the board is good with it. I think it's a good idea, and I'm very open to, to seeing what the county can do better or, or have other opportunities.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I agree, I think it-
As long as it's legal.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Hundred percent.
Like I say, like, as long as we, well, like, like I say, we'll, we, I guess we probably need to get our, our thoughts, uh, to Mr. Novak, so, in a way he can make sure we, we won't be, um, breaking any, any, any laws or any rules.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, you won't be. I'll make sure of that, as I do every day.
Yeah, I'm not trying to go to jail.
No, that's my job to keep you out of it. So, uh, we'll notice it, um, we'll work through Becky and Leanna, um, we'll notice the workshop and work with Michael and his staff. I'm trying to get a good date for you all after we come out of the new year and, and, uh, notice it. And like I said, if it's a free form of a workshop, just as a reorganization, if there is a set agenda, but it would really just be a workshop that each of you districts could then talk about your goals and agendas for the coming year, um, and just have a free flow of, uh, discussion. Again, uh, it's just the logistics, and the commissioner said if it's not here, it's somewhere else, that would be one thing that we'd have to obviously get across, accommodate the public and the technology. So, if it's not here, we'd have to work on that, but certainly within the four corners of the law.
Okay, all right, sounds good. You're good?
Good, yeah.
Good, 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 okay. Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
That's it? All right, Commissioner, uh, Michael Moore?
I've got a whole lot of time. I want to thank, uh, Mark, him, him and his staff has been doing a lot of stuff, and, uh, want to definitely thank him. And Raymond, been calling on him a lot, and, uh, got a lot to do. So, I'll be getting with him, and we'll get it started. I'll be getting with him and we'll get it started. That's it.
All right, thanks, sir. All right, Commissioner McCrone.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I wanna welcome the new Commissioners. I think we're gonna have a great board. Look forward to working with you guys. Wanna talk about public works a little bit. Uh, Mark, just, just a great job y'all did at 10th Street, man. That was a massive job. And, uh, man, y'all, I, I, I'll be honest, we got a great crew, Michael, over there, cause, man, you got some operators, can operate some equipment. And, uh, I, I, I'm impressed.
I don't say it enough, but I do have a great crew. They're, they're a relatively young crew, but they are very talented in what they do. They're safety oriented. I mean, and that shows from the, when we have a safety program at the county. And it's a dangerous job that we do a lot of times, but it's a great group of guys. They're, they're good together. They're good at what they do. I don't speak highly enough about them often, but a great group of guys.
I, I, I'll be honest, I don't know of a construction company that could've done a better job. I, I, I tell you, cause that was a massive job.
They did it twice as fast as I thought they could.
Absolutely. And, and I, I'm impressed and appreciate y'all's effort on that. Uh, just wanna wish everyone a, a happy Thanksgiving and, uh, uh, spend time with your family and love on everybody. And, and we'll see you next month.
I just echo what, uh, Commissioner McCrone said. Uh, we got a great staff. I know a lot of times y'all hear say that all the time, but trust me, that, these guys, man, they do a great job, do a fantastic job. And, um, I don't think Mark has ever told me no. I don't think Austin has never told me no. And I don't think Mr. Raymond has ever told me no. But I know sometimes they probably wanna tell me no. Uh, but they do a fantastic job. They'll figure out, they figure out, they always figure out a way, well, we'll see how we can get it done. And so thank you guys for that. Um, happy Thanksgiving to everyone. Go enjoy your families like Mr. McCrone. Say go love them a little bit more. We're going into a new, uh, getting ready to go into a, a December and go into a, a new year. So make sure, um, you know what I'm saying, you pull them a little bit closer as you, uh, day by day. Don't take each day for granted, like saying, uh, we really do appreciate, uh, we do, we really do appreciate the public being here. Uh, trust me. You guys, uh, like I say, it, I know sometimes it seems like we'd be, you know, it, it can be aggravating. It seems like we may be aggravated, but, uh, that's just the nature of it. Sometimes we, we just kinda, sometimes we are confused sometimes and, but we do appreciate you guys being here. So, and, and once again, thank, uh, congratulations to the new Commissioners. Like I said, I think you guys are gonna do, you're gonna do a fantastic job. So congratulations. Um, that's all I have. Uh, moving on down to item six, Mr. Novak, you got some before we bring Mr. Anderson up?
Yeah, I'd invite Mr. Anderson to come on up. Um, it's sunrise, sunset HOA. Um, they've been at our last two meetings. And at your last meeting, um, you gave Mr. Anderson some direction to go back and work with his HOA members, the 10 unit owners out there. Um, and we've had, uh, some good dialogue since then as well. Um, and Mr. Anderson has been trying to make some strides with the owners, as well as his contractors, his vendors, his experts. Um, and, and we had a very productive conversation about two weeks ago, following your last meeting. Um, in, in regards to the Commissioners' comments, the administrative staff, our planning department, our LDRs, our comp plan, and really what Sunrise Sunset's trying to accomplish. Um, and about five o'clock this morning, Mr. Anderson sent me an email. It's a couple pages long with an attached DEP emergency permit for the CCO, um, signed by Ms. Massingill, which I believe is the president of your HOA. So I have that in front of me. I've read through his comments and I had an opportunity to talk to him for a couple minutes before we started this morning. Um, and I wanna thank Mr. Anderson for, uh, continuing to work on trying to find something that the Commission can, as to Commissioner's husband's comments last meeting, trying to work with these folks, try to help them. I know Commissioner McCrone as well. Um, you guys are all trying to find solutions, but within our LDRs, our comp plan and within the law. So I, I, I've read the requests. I'll let Mr. Anderson kinda summarize them for you. Um, and if the staff has any additional comments, but it looks like it's headed in the right direction from my initial glancing of it.
All right, thanks, sir. I understand. Go ahead and introduce yourself. And you have the floor.
Jeremy Anderson, uh, Jeremy Anderson, Attorney for, uh, Sunrise Sunset Homeowners Association. Thank you, Attorney Novak. Congratulations, uh, to the new Commissioners. Um, yes, took your directive, uh, went back with my client and our experts. And we believe we have a proposal that protects and preserves, uh, as you indicated earlier, that you're, you're wanting to do for those properties out there. Doing it at our expense, uh, doing something that, uh, is permitted by DEP. The DEP, uh, they've requested either, uh, an approval letter or I guess, uh, issuance of a notice of, uh, non, non, uh, non objection. So what we're asking for is, essentially what it is, it's GO bags. They're about seven foot long, four foot wide, 18 inches tall. And, uh, we're gonna fill hundreds of those bags, uh, potentially approximately about a hundred. Put them in on the inside of the wall, not on the exterior side of the wall, inside of the wall, show up around the base and under the structure and around it. That'll allow for and prevent the additional erosion to, to save the, the buildings. We're not asking to, at this point, to make any sort of repairs to the wall, leave the wall as is. We're also asking that, um, code enforcement, uh, with their discretionary authority, uh, at your direction, abate, uh, the current code enforcement action against the, the owners. You have, uh, you've discussed earlier today, the, uh, the beach re-nourishment project and the installation of the groynes. And what we'd like this to have is leave the wa, wall as is, let the installation of the groynes, the beach re-nourishment, and then revisit the wall at that time, kinda preserve everything as is. And it would allow us to protect, uh, those 10 homes on the, on the Cape. Again, it's at, at our expense.
All right, thank you, sir. Uh, any questions, Commissioners, from Mr. Anderson?
So y'all have a DEP permit?
Yeah, yes, it's contingent. They, they've indicated that they will issue it, but they either need the, the notice of no contest or the approval letter, whatever letter they require, I believe. Uh, Mr. Doug Crane has spoke, were you able to speak to, uh, DEP to clarification?
I never received a call back from them. Uh, and me and Jack have talked about this. Typically, this, the sand and the GO bags is something that we don't permit as a county. Uh, that's not something we require a permit for. And they've never asked us for, uh, an NOCC, a Notice of Construction Consistency. We will obviously be, uh, willing to give that, uh, you know, if it goes through the normal process. I was just trying to get clarification on exactly what they wanted. I did not get a return phone call back. The only thing, the process for the NOCC is, is that the exact plans that were turned in to DEP would need to be turned into my office. That way I can see what I'm given that letter for. Uh, I can see how many bags, the location, where, you know, what's the extent of the project. Basically, it's the same plan set that was, and the application that was turned into DEP gets turned into me. And then I can look at it and say, yes, the county has no problem with this, and then issue that letter. So.
We, we can, uh, provide, uh, the full plans, uh, to Mr. Bob Crane, excuse me, Doug Crane.
So, so your, your geo-synthetic bags, they're gonna be within the wall structure?
A hundred percent within the wall, uh, structure and either, and around the base and then on the inside of the wall.
And, okay. So I'm just trying to help. Do y'all have a mechanism where it can break away just in case? So they don't all go away at once? I don't know how our building official would think about that or our planner or building department.
They're not, they're not attached to anything. They're just placed down into the hole.
Okay, good.
And, um, and, and around the base, so they're not, uh, you know, structurally tied to any sort of, uh, uh, our building or the, the sea, the wall itself.
And if those bags move, y'all are gonna maintain those?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, Commissioner.
That's all, that's all I have. It's all within their, their property, in my opinion. So I don't, I don't have any problem whatsoever. I think it'd be, if it, if it'll work, it'd be great.
And the last thing, if I may, is, uh, the return of the $10,000, uh, since we won't be, uh, at this point seeking a variance?
I think we've already, yeah, agreed to do that. Absolutely. I think that was one of our first motions in this whole.
Okay, just, just wanted to confirm that. Thank you.
Yep. We made a motion to do that, give them back the $10,000. And if they do need a variance, you can still come back and that'll save your homeowner $2,500 for that $1,000 apiece versus the $1,250. That was our, I think that was the motion.
All right, any more questions real quick before we go? Uh, you got some?
So the board doesn't have to take action on this, cause the, the building department and the planning department can issue this. The only thing that, that we cannot agree to is, is this indefinite stay of the, of the wall. So, you know, that'll have to be overriding us by the board if y'all choose to do that. We're, we're at stay right now, basically till the first of the year, but, but this indefinite for months or years, uh, with the wall is, is something that the board, at some juncture, will have to take action on. What, what they're requesting now does not have to be approved by the board.
Reason why there, there's no plan now is we really can't do anything. We don't have access on the sides and you can't really get a barge on the other side. Very extensive crane would have to come over the building and pull it out. It's, um, you know, you are planning on this growing project. There's gonna be beach re-nourishment. At that point, we'd have, uh, a much cheaper access. And if we pulled it out, um, it's less likely for the bags to, you know, protect the property from, uh, being condemned like additional properties. So it, it was there for, for what, 11, 12 plus years? And we're just asking for some additional time, hopefully we get the funds so that the groynes and the beach re-nourishment can be placed there. We can revisit the removal.
Okay. I, I just got one quick question. Uh, so if we do, uh, once the beach re-nourishment goes through and the, the structures are out there, how far, how far, how much sand would be on that property?
It's hard to, to say, because this is the, the other part of the law. So you have to take where the erosion, we can't legally put sand on private property. Now, sand that we put there will wind up on private property because of wave action and wind and all those type things. But wherever that ECL line is, correct me if I'm wrong, Clay, is, is the furthest extent landward that the county can. Some of these properties have eroded tremendously. So the erosion control line in some of these properties, maybe not this one, maybe 100 feet from their structure. And further with some. Some, the erosion control line may be 15 feet from the structure because of, you know, the fact that they were very tight when they did the original erosion control line. So it, we would have to do it on a property by property basis, we couldn't, couldn't say. Whether immediately, meaning in the new year or long term, that, that unpermitted by the county, again, I don't wanna be here for five hours talking about who permitted it, uh, needs to come out, cause it's a violation of your comp plan.
You got something?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, um, Commissioner Husband, I think summarized that motion, some of the things you guys accomplished in your first two meetings. Um, and to Michael's point, which is the indefinite period of time. Um, I, I know the, uh, the request of the homeowners and Mr. Anderson, what they're coming for today. And it would be the recommendation that you'd add hopefully to that motion that you don't have a, a timeline on the groin and the re-nourishment. So, subject to they wanting to do this GO bag, they've submitted a, a GO bag system and data sheet and their CCO emergency application. So it looks like they're all heading in the right direction, but I would, I would encourage you all to possibly put like, say, a, a couple months down the road that the staff can go back, look at the progress, um, at that time. Um, they wanna accomplish this. They're gonna try to work towards that. It looks like in the next couple of months, but to give you an opportunity with your staff to go back in the spring and see where it is. If those bags are not there in a couple of months, you should have the ability to proceed. But, so you at least give them a window of time, but it's not indefinite, goes on for years on end until you get your project done. They're gonna obviously make an investment. And with that, you give them the opportunity that they don't need to pull that wall out, to Michael's point, right now. But give you the opportunity to go back in the spring at some point, to go back and revisit it and continue to extend it if you feel it's appropriate.
Yes, I'd like to add. So do, uh, do we have any more? Anybody else has done GO bags in our county or anywhere around? So it's basically new to us, Jack. I mean, do you know?
There's been some, there's been some illegal type bags done before, but not a actual, they're actually called trap, trap bags is the trademark term for them. But some people tried some things that years ago that were essentially the same concept.
How did, how did they?
Well, it, it was.
Hard to say?
Yeah. It, it didn't, it's not, it's not the same enough to, to conclude a, an answer.
I got it. I, I guess where I've, I went out there and looked at the property this, this weekend and it is, I mean, I feel, I know you've been dealing with it too. And it, you know, the legality of it, you know, and I don't even go to that side of it. But, um, this is something new. You're trying to hopefully protect it. And there's, there needs to be a, a timeline on how long it goes. Uh, I think a reassessment, but I also needs to be something in there that this is a special, written in there that this is, we're not doing this. We're not breaking our LDR. We're, we're, we're not amending it or changing anything to do with it. We're allowing this because of the emergency situation that you had, which you declared. And that it's only for a specific time because of extenuating circumstances. And it will be revisited at certain intervals going forward. That, that would be, that would be my suggestion, that we put a, that, that, that you're acknowledging that this is not the way we're gonna do business on the, out there with, with seawalls. And that it was done. And, you know, that's, that, that was my thoughts on it, that, that we, we come to the same conclusion, but we need to monitor it. And, cause we don't want this going forward, correct? I mean, that's where we've been before.
Can, can we, I mean, and I'm just throwing this out there. So, so we'll, can we put a, I'm just, I'm just.
Three-month window?
Yeah, put a three-month window and then, uh.
What do you think, Jack? I, I think a three-month window is good. I think that we're all trying to accomplish the same goal here now, I think, it sounds like. So if, if we can see your plan, that's the main thing is like, if you submit to DEP, hey, what are you going to do? If this doesn't work, what is, what is your engineer telling you to, to do as a backup plan or the placement of the location? If we can see that work is going on, I think that, with the growing project so close, hopefully, um, uh, they're in, in dire need and there's no need for us to, to go down that road again right now. But if you have a plan in place or an action plan, steps, um, maybe similar to something that we did, with, uh, like a septic or sewer in a VE zone, something like, you know, there's certain steps you take, um, if there's certain situations. So, um, if, if there's a way for y'all to have that plan, I think that's the most advantageous portion for me that, that would say that you, you're trying and have a secondary plan of attack as well. I think that's gonna be beneficial for y'all. I mean, it's not for, it's not for me. It's, it's for y'all. But if it's in place, that will, that will help me, help, help y'all.
Okay. Um, if I may, I mean, three, three months, it's a little short. I mean, we're gonna get, we plan on, if this is approved, plan on getting them in. But it's been there longer than a decade.
I think we're asking to, to more or less check in at three months. We're not asking for a, a setting a dead, hard deadline here.
Okay. Would that be, uh, check in with, uh, let's just say, the, Mr. Crane or the county administrator or come back before?
Yeah, just, just check in with Mr. Crane.
Okay.
I think it's a reasonable ask. I do too. And it, it, this is for their protection. It's, it's not for us at all. It's, it's for y'all.
Thank you.
So, so, um, Mr. Anderson, that's all the thing. I, I guess you just need to get those plans to Mr. Crane. And then, uh, he'll, he'll go over them and then you'll issue the letter?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Now, uh, going back to the, um, the return. So we are good with the, the return of the funds? Okay, all right, okay.
All right. Thank you very much.
So the only thing you need to vote on, I believe, Brad, correct me if I'm wrong, we can handle everything else internally. You, the, the stay to remove the wall needs to be a three-month stay and, and you'll review it in three months. That's the only thing I think the board needs is, am, am I missing something? Doug? Okay. So that's the action we need y'all to.
Can we do a, a, a three-month and after Mr. Crane, uh, Brad goes in and looks at it, we can extend it for additional three. Where it's a total of six months, just in case.
It's up to you, I'll be yourself. Correct. We, we can bring it back to you, say just in your, in your February meeting, if y'all wanna do that. We'll, we'll bring it back to you for you to make a further, give us further direction.
All right, entertain, I entertain the motion.
So move.
The motion by Commissioner McCrone, second by Commissioner Pridgen. Uh, any further board discussion? Uh, anyone in the public, anyone in the public? In the opposition to the motion? All right, motion passed 5-0. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, staff.
Jerry Tucksperry?
Congratulations, Jerry Hall Tucksperry, 2810 Indian Pass Road. Congratulations to everybody. And my dearest sympathies to what's going on at Cape. I'm heartfelt for you. My issue's a little bit different. I'm curious with this new project, and y'all will be able to answer this, I hope, for me. Where we refer to the old pier that goes out into the Gulf there on the Indian Pass beach. The past restoration projects stopped at that pier coming from the Cape toward us eastwardly advancing. And it stopped there. You had your berm being built. I think the portion that I refer to as our, um, westwardly end of Indian Pass, that berm is holding better, obviously, than what the Cape is. We didn't have any restoration from the pier down to the boat ramp. So the new project, is that gonna be included in any berm restoration or any dune restoration?
No, it's not, Mr. Jerry.
We lost a considerable amount, I think you're aware of it, um, during Michael. That is never rebuilt. Never had any, um, county intervention to try to get funding to rebuild the dune. And I looked up on your, so the, the request is, I hope someday we get included, cause I think we're being vastly ignored. It's part of our. get included, because I think we're being vastly ignored. Um, it's part of our public and personal beach, to be completely transparent. I live on the ocean there. This would be personal to me, but I also like to be an advocate for our beach, for the public. Um, our biggest problem, not to add on, and you hate to do this at this time with the crisis we've got going on at the Cape, a study was conducted in 2007, and it was, I got this off the internet, this is from your past meetings, it was presented on January the 22nd, 2013, to the Board of Commissioners. It's a study about the problems from the design and location of the boat ramp. And I am 100% an advocate to keep the boat ramp, please. It's personal to me, and I also get to personally witness the public using it. So many people enjoy this, and it's a great asset to our community. My concern is the design of it, and it is in bad repair right now. It's created what I have researched to call a Bernoulli's Principle. I know you know what this principle means, being an engineer. Anytime you put a concrete structure perpendicular to the shoreline or water movement, creates an eddy on either side, depending on which way the tide is moving, scoops up your sand, carries it out to the ocean. If it's going for an intide, it's going, incoming tide, it's going to head toward Apalachicola Bay. As it passes the two groins, you've got a vortex and it sucks that sand, and there we go, filling up the boat ramp. If we have a, uh, tide going back out to the Gulf, we get the opposite effect, scoops up sand from the other side, here it goes the other way.
Hold on one second, Ms. Ms. Tucksperry, let me get your time extended. Can I get a motion to extend? Motion by Commissioner McCrone, second by Commissioner Pridgen, in the opposition, motion passed five and oh. Go ahead.
So I also looked up Florida Constitutional Article 10, Section 11. It says, "Any sand that is seaward on the high water land is considered in a public trust for Florida." So the way I look at it, if we have sand constantly dumped in the ramp, if it's taken out versus the county carting the sand off, we don't know where it's gone, we've constantly complained about it disappearing, it feels like it should be placed back on our beaches, right there at Indian Pass. We have a huge swath of dune destruction, and I have a picture of that, and I also have a picture taken shortly after aerial from when the ramp was built, and you can actually see the tremendous dip on the beachfront of sand that's, is not going to come back. So I would like to request if we could get on the berm restoration project that y'all are working on for other sections, the Cape, and, um, be included in that. But also, is there any intention in the future to relocate the boat ramp and redesign the boat ramp? And I look at it, I would have loved for the campground to have been purchased by the county. I actually was an advocate for that. Um, then I switched because the county couldn't afford it, it was right after Michael, the funds were tight, I understood that. I went and tried to work with the lady over at St. Vincent's to get the feds. The bureaucracy took us down, we just couldn't fight it. And so now, I know that we will have additional traffic. You have to keep an access there for emergency EMS services, you need it for your public safety, for your sheriff. We need to keep an access on that point right there by the boat ramp, and that land is getting eaten up more and more and more. Right now, it looks pretty good, because we're in a seasonal time when our tides go out further, and it, look, it gives you the false perception that we have more beach than we do. So, two requests. One, I'd like to see that the county not cart the sand away, and I have the State of Florida extension from Governor DeSantis saying he's extended an extra 60 days, that you can waive permits from the county, from the local or state governments, to restore sand back to where it came from without getting a permit. And that is 60 days from the date of, I believe, the 21st of this month. So that's 60 days from today. So my request immediately would be, there's two piles, huge piles of sand right now by our boat ramp, could I get the county to spread that back on the beach or to the dune? The worst hotspot, which is referred to in the original study that was done in 2007, says it affects the campground area greatly, but it also has a hotspot on the westward side, moving westward of the boat ramp, which would be about the first, if you were to count, just looking at homeowners, about the first five. I've got pictures that all of them have lost their footings for their boat, boardwalks. They boarded it up to keep any visitors, family members, anyone they rent to from falling off. Um, so it would just be common sense, and not being that I'm asking for it, because I personally lived there and it would affect me, but it just seems common sense to take that hotspot and put your sand back where Helena took out the dune. And we never got it replaced from Michael, we've been kind of just living with that. The dune is caving in, so you brought down vegetation. I understand from what Governor DeSantis says, you don't want to put sand on top of any, you know, regrowth of vegetation or vegetation that occurred from the cave-in from Michael, but from where the high water line is now, you can add sand back to that, uh, landward, because our dune from Helena got washed out once again, a good bit of it. I had a engineer report saying how much just my property dune, and it's not, I don't consider it private property, but I, I considered it public property to me, depending on where that, uh, high water line is. Um, it seems like I have permission to bring in sand at my own expense and add back to that dune without obtaining any kind of permits. That's what I read from the extension that Governor DeSantis just gave.
Is that, that's, that's correct, right?
I believe that'd be the case. I'd still go through the field permit process, but there, there is an emergency order that anybody can add, add sand back to their property. Certainly don't need anything from the county. I'd run it through the field permit.
Michael, let me ask you this one, uh, Ms. Jerry's here, uh, can we legally, you know, the sand we dig out of the boat ramp, what is our?
We can't put it on private property legally, I don't believe, but.
Well, I wouldn't, okay, I'm, I'm not asking for that, that would be atrocious.
Yeah.
I would like to see it added back to where we have dune destruction, because what I read in the reports from engineers, the dunes help maintain the beach width, and in turn, when you have different seasons, different tides, different winds, the beach width renourishes the dune. So it's a give and take. So if we don't re-nourish our dunes, we won't ever have any hope of keeping beach width. If we don't think of in the future of redoing the ramp, maybe locating it slightly around toward the end of the road, um, my thoughts, and I'm not an engineer, so Jack, I'd have to have your comments on this. If you moved the ramp where you're coming down Indian Pass Road, I looked at the county appraiser, who owns what, where lines are. I see that that tip is owned by the county. You've got your little bathroom there, you've got your, um, shower, and that line goes right behind that straight into the water, that is considered county road. If you were to move a boat ramp so that it ended up at the very end of the road, and you built it with just pylons with elevated walkways but not groynes, so you don't have any kind of perpendicular, um, structure that your water's going to hit to create an, an eddy flow, would that not help resolve losing the whole ends of the beach?
It could. I mean, and no, I'm not trying to be funny here, but the entertainment value is going to be much more for y'all at the boat ramp, though, is the problem.
Entertainment value? Oh, yeah, I got you. Um, I'm just trying to think of preserving the beach of Indian Pass, you know, I'm an advocate for that. It does affect me personally, but I'm thinking of the whole area, right? So, um, it appears that it would give you a larger turnaround area with boats and trailers and trucks, because we have such a congestion there now, and I think we're getting ready to have a lot more congestion when we have new plans with what's going to be done with the campground. So, um, and I see that the boat ramp is at this moment in bad repair anyway. So if we could kill two things with one stone, get it relocated to a better position, that doesn't hurt our environment, gives a little bit relief to, uh, traffic congestion, an easier use of the boat ramp, keeps the boat ramp for the public, and has the final and added benefit, it stops tearing up the beach. It would cost the county less in maintenance, I believe, than what it's doing now. And then the final request would be, any sand that's there now, can you spread it back on our beach versus cart it off? It just doesn't seem like, according to Article 10, Section 11, that it's the county's right to cart it off. It seems like it's a public-funded trust of sand by the state of Florida. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I don't think we've ever tried to cart it off, have we, Mark?
Well, oh, gosh, yes. I got, I got you on video, cart, carting it off, and we've called personally multiple times. We've sent texts, please stop taking the sand away. And I.
How many times have you seen them?
Oh, gosh, if you were to ask me a number, I wouldn't be able to tell you. I've lived there now, I've been there, um, prior to building and being there for six years. And I've seen it, especially after Michael, it was load after load after load after load, and it actually turned out to be someone privately that brought a dump truck down there. And I think we called someone at that time to say, is that right? Should they be doing that? Shouldn't that sand be going back down to the beach? And it was stopped. But then each time the county comes in and builds a big pile of sand, I've only had the county spread it to my memory once back on the beach, and that was at our request. So we're just asking, please stop hauling it off.
I don't think we're hauling any sand over, Mark.
Well.
I know, I know for years, agreement was that, uh, campground, you know, would, would take, take the sand, uh, for a long, I, I mean, even before you were here, Ms. Jerry. Yeah, they were, you know.
Well, I personally got pictures of y'all hauling it down Indian Pass Road, and part of us were saying, well, gosh, we ought to just follow the truck and see where the sand's going. We kind of all assumed it was going to Salinas Park, because I mean, they need sand too. But, um, that's just our request. Let's don't worry about what happened in the past, let's just move forward, all right? Because I'm not up here to be an adversary, I'm just an advocate. I don't want to rock the boat, I don't want to create a problem. I want to bring attention to it so that in the future, as we maintain the present boat ramp we have, please spread it back on the dunes or the beach. And we know it's just going to get caught up again, but if we could put it where Governor DeSantis talks about, where we've recently lost dune again due to Helena, can we put it back there to start building that dune? Because that's going to help nourish the width of the beach a little bit better than just dumping it right on the beach and getting caught up in the water flow. Does that make sense?
Can we legally, Michael, put it, you know, what we dig out?
Can't put it in the dune, not without a permit.
Yeah.
Well, the, right now, you've got 60 days that you can do it. So at least what you got sitting there now, you've got a 60-day extension, no permits required.
We put a tractor in that dune, and somebody's going to come try to put me in jail. Uh, we, we can spread it back on the beach, it'll go right back in the, in the, in the thing.
Well, I'd rather it go back and forth and pay piggyback than to see, because I've got pictures of how we used to look, and I wish I had an aerial, because that would have been comparing apples to apples, not apples to oranges. But this is what our dune looks like right now, just after Helena. This picture here was taken off the wall of someone that has a.
Ms. Ms. Tucksperry, if you, if you give it to us, we're gonna have, we're gonna, we're gonna have to turn it in to the clerk once we, uh, so you.
I'm just gonna show you because you're my fellow. So this shows what it looks like and what the ramp is causing the big scoop, and this shows how the beach used to look, and this was right after the ramp was in place. So all I'm asking is, if we're going to play switchback with, um, sand going back and forth, well, why don't we just put it back, and then, then we've got sand ready to be scooped out, and go back around, and we can go back and forth with it.
Clay, could we ask Joe Morrow to give us a Cliff Notes version of what that would, what that would do for us? And then go, and then we would have something to at least hang our hats on?
Yes, but, but I, I, I think we just need to make one clarification. Again, we're talking about sand in the boat ramp, one thing. Those damages from the hurricane didn't come from the boat ramp, they come because the hurricane destroyed the dune.
I think it's a combination of both. I do agree. The evulsion is a rapid loss of sand, that's due to storms. Accretion is ebb and tide of, of sand. And I think what the boat ramp does is interfere with the accretion process, where you have natural ebb and flow of sand, because we're not, not one of us is ever going to stop sand from moving. We'd be nuts. And not one of us can say, we hope a storm never hits our area again. But you definitely don't want an impediment there that prevents the accretion process from occurring, the natural ebb and flow of sand.
I think we got a, we got a, we got a plan going forward.
Yeah, I think, I'll, I'll get Clay to take a look at it, Ms. Jerry, and we'll, we'll see what we can do.
All right. It's just, it's just a suggestion, and you hate that at this moment of crisis to even bring it up, but I also realize that the squeaky wheel doesn't start getting squeaky, it never gets any grease. And as long as it's taken to get the other project going, I, I figured we ought to start talking about it.
Yeah, I'll get Mr. Smallwood to get in contact, how about that?
All right. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you, Ms. Tucksperry. Mr. Richard Bracken of Florida 27 Recycle. So you introduce yourself, please.
Yes, sir. Good morning, Commissioners, Richard Bracken, Christie Bracken, 7415, County Road 38. Um, we met, I met with you guys back in August introducing our recycling program, and it's from August to early part of September. I had communications with Mr. Novak, and he gave me some suggestions of what I needed to do. He said I needed to reach out to the City of Port St. Joe, because we're going to provide recycling services with some Port St. Joe, speak to BCC, and review the solid waste contracting ordinance. And I did all that stuff, and I did have a meeting with the City of Port St. Joe. I did meet with Mike Cox, and at the time, he said it was, um, okay for us to do our recycling business, and I did review the contract. And I prepared the, the memo that, uh, Mr. Novak suggested describing consenting to the contract and the ordinance, and describing how we were to prepare, conduct our business, our business, which I did share with him, and he subsequently shared with the county commissioners and administration. So I was hoping to have an opportunity to review that memo with you guys at the September meeting. So I did follow up with the administration toward the end of September, and they was going to follow up, let me know, and nothing came about it. I did another follow up in October, and it still didn't, didn't I get a follow up, so, um, shame on me for not just coming to the meeting and, and having it addressed, but I was trying to do it, I thought, the proper way of having it addressed through the administration and being invited to a meeting. Um, since then, uh, we've been still negotiating with the Port of St. Joe, trying to secure some property from them. Early part of October, we received a lease, a lease draft from them that we signed, sent back in with a start date of October 15th. After, even after October 15th, we were receiving, still receiving questions relating to that lease. Um, from, from the time that we, we signed the lease, we thought we had a lease that was, that was going to be executed. So we started marketing the company to the cu, to our, um, to our, to the customers. Um, from October 15th going toward the end of October, we found out that the questions were still being asked, that the port was not going to sign the, um, they execute their lease. So we kind of created a halt. Um, we got a letter, a letter from Mr. Novak ordering us to cease the, um, the recycling activities within Gulf County, City of Port St. Joe, and we did that. We canceled all the subscriptions with the customers of, uh, the unincorporated Gulf County, uh, returned all the money, canceled them, and then sought the advice of, um, our, um, attorney, Charles Costin, about the next process going forward. So, um, just, I guess I don't know what we need to do today. I mean, we got, I have the memo that we started back in September, trying to describe how we, we were to do our businesses. It's, it's going to be very labor intensive, it's very hard work. We're going, we are preparing to go out on a voluntary basis, collect recycled, recycled materials from residential homes and businesses. We're, we're going to provide 18-gallon totes, 48-gallon bins. They, they deposit the recyclable materials in the, in the bins, cardboard, paper, plastic, glass, styrofoam, everything goes into one container. We, we go through and collect the materials once a week. Uh, we go to our, uh, our facility, we dump the materials, manually sort everything and buy their, buy their types, store it up, and once we have enough materials of the products, we can then in turns, package it up and transfer it over to Tallahassee for selling. It sounds easy, but it's going to be a lot of work. Um, it'd be a whole lot of work. So looking at the current contract with, um, Charles Costin and, um, talking with Mr. Novak, the contract. the contract allows for BCC the exclusive right of recycling. However, BCC has elected not to provide recycling to the Gulf County communities. And then within a state statutes, that the statutes require that the county provide recycling services. So what we're asking the county to do, and this relates to the memo, the letter that she and I, Chris and I shared with you guys a few weeks ago, is to ask you guys to reconsider to allow us to provide recycling services to Gulf County.
All right. Thanks, sir.
Couple of quick things, and then I'll let Jeremy talk unless one of the commissioners wants to go first. I, I, it's a little bit chapped this. I, I don't think you understood no. I told you no, so that, so it was over at that point. So there was no need for us to follow up. And then when you proceeded on without BCC owner and, and president's approval, you got a cease and desist letter. So that's where the county's been. So there's never been anything that you're waiting on the county to tell you something. From day one, I told you in this meeting, when you first came and said, we're, we're fixed to do all these things. I was like, time, time, time. We've got a flow control ordinance. We've got an exclusive contract with them. The other thing, and I understand you've called the state and all these other things, Gulf County is a small county, is exempt from those requirements for recycling. So don't come up and say that Gulf County has to have a recycling plan. If the board decides to go forward with recycling, again, with, with a letter from BCCs that says they don't care because they have the first right of refusal and they have the exclusive contract in the county, the Board of County Commissioners couldn't just say, okay, you're in the recycling business. You can do it. They have to put that out for anybody that wants to be in the recycling business. Why they would, I don't know. But those quick clarifications on my part. Jeremy, you want to say anything else?
But before you go to Mr. Novak, I just got a question. You say you got a lease draft. For, for what, what piece of property?
Well, it was a draft for the Port of St. Joe. We, we worked with Gary Magison about leasing out two acres of property. But it was near the, the, uh, away, a, a truck, truck scale station. So I'd, talking to Mr. Commissioner Pridgen and, and some, one of the board members of the port. I think that that will not go through because of, they were concerned about the unsightings of our, what the site would look like. So we've worked with Franklin County, Mr. Davis and Mr. Marrone. So they, they've helped us find some property in Franklin County. So we're going to, we're going to transfer the site to Franklin County to collect and store recyclable materials. And then Franklin County has a, a baler that we can actually use to process the material to, to transfer over to Tallahassee.
So, so Mr. Bracken, my question is, and I'm glad that, you know, I know where that property is located. So, uh, so you haven't started the company. So, so I'm kind of confused. So how can you market something that's, you don't even have a, a piece of property to, to store? And you said that you also collected money from people. So I'm trying to figure out, how could you collect money from somebody when your, the company is not even collecting recyclable materials?
We were, oh, so we were collecting money with, once we thought we had a lease for October fifteenth. So we did start marketing and phrase a collection service to begin, even for November's pickup.
So people were actually paying you based on your market, whatever you told them, knowing that, I mean, before I, before I.
Yes, sir.
Pay anybody anything, I need to see, I need to see a building. I need to see, I need to see something. Where, where were, I mean, you may not want to say this, but where were the, who, who are these people that were actually, were actually giving you money?
Just, uh, we, we, we were marketing at the different festivals. We're on, on just social media that we were starting a recycle pick, collection services with identifying the port as the place where we were going to sort and store the materials. Sorting and storing the material, we're going to put just stored sheds, containers on site to separate the materials and store it, so.
So you have other employees besides just you and me?
No, it's, it's right now, it's just me, my wife, my son. We're, we're starting it, and once we get it going, it's going to be, we're starting out with just. At the time, we had maybe seventy customers and hoping we can, we're going to build up from there. And then as things get built, grow, we document the process of how it, how we would have stuff being processed so we can actually hire drivers to pick up the, the recyclable materials, hire people to sort, properly sorting and process the materials to be sold.
All right. Uh, yes, sir.
I got a question, yes, sir. It's, it's an easy question, I think. Where is your recovered materials processing facility for sorting and bundling at?
Right now, it's going to be done in Franklin County.
So you have a contract with Franklin County or a piece of property there?
We have a, we have a piece of property in Franklin County. The Franklin County's, the, the transfer station at Franklin County has a baler, so. So we will store, sort all materials. We'll take the cardboard plastics, aluminum cans for their process.
So I've been dealing with this. Just to let you know, you know, because we talked about it before. Transfer station was going to be, you know, on industrial road. There was a contract. We didn't, really didn't know about it until we went to that first port meeting. Some concerns came up about when recyclers, believe me, I would love to recycle in this community. A lot of people have moved here that came from a larger municipality that had recycling. And they come here and they go, why don't you have this? Over the years, I've talked with staff. There's been years that they have tried it because, you know, that was, that was the thing to do. Probably when the legislation was coming out, everybody wanted to do it. And, and it's great. What, what has happened, though, is the recovery of these materials is where the red light came up. Just to start this process, and you know it because I know you've done some research on it as well. You're talking about not just aluminum cans, which I think we do at the Cape. Don't, don't they do it at the fire station a little bit out there? They do a little bit because that's pretty easy, you know. They still have problems with that. People throwing beer bottles and stuff like that. They still have to do a little sorting. But then they have to crush it, however, and then get it over and make a little bit of money to go back into their thing. So that's something that's been done. I know that in Franklin County, they started doing a little bit with trying to do the glass bottles. And it was really more of a, an awareness thing because you're talking about glass, a crusher. Those are expensive, very, very expensive pieces of equipment. And wait on that, just to try, you, you, your truck's not going to hold the glass. I'll be, I know you got a regular truck. It's not going to hold that. So there's a lot of issues that come up with, with the model. We do appreciate your, say, hey, we want to do recycling. You heard probably the same people that I heard. We would like to have that down here. And so I guess that started the wheels in motion. However, when the wheels got going, I think they got a little, in my opinion, got a little big. And then we were talking about putting garbage because, I know you said nine percent of it is byproduct. And I've heard a lot that's a little bit higher than that. That's in the twenties and thirties of byproduct. That means product that you put in a recycling bin that didn't work. You didn't clean out the mayonnaise jar. As, as Deborah said the other day, you have a, a dog food can and you didn't wash it out. So many people in your target area, and I know your target area. That's the Cape, and it's going to be the Windmark area. Those are probably where most of your customers coming from, correct, in this county? So, and those are in the county, with some in the city with, with Windmark. There are a lot of rentals in there. We, how many conversations have y'all had the past years over just the people not even putting garbage in the garbage can out there on the Cape? We have ordinances, Jeremy, that you've crafted, talking about ordinances. Oh, my gosh, it's, it's every week, just doing that, much less taking a mayonnaise jar and cleaning it out because it's plastic or the cans and stuff. So that was, that was what really got us going. And then we talked about the mill site. It's right there. We call it, even you, you heard it, the tourist corridor, basically, where that is. And do we want to come over the bridge and see the recycling sorting? And not only here, we were talking about bringing it over from Appalachia Cola. And that's, then my red lights went off. So we're bringing stuff over there to here to recycle. We're going to have byproduct here. A lot of red lights went off. And then we start talking about sheer volume, numbers, and finances. And I, I know your accounting background, which is great. I, I don't know how you're making the numbers work because our county, with assistance of a hundred and twenty page, how much is, how much is BCC's contract? Hundred and twenty something pages? Hundred and twenty such, twenty something pages of, of contract language to take to do, they're just basic garbage, which they pick it up, throw it, take it to the transfer station and transfer it out of here. So the sorting and I, if someone gets sick, you get sick for a week. What happens? Does it sit there for a week? So there's a lot of things there. We're not trying to, I'm not trying to shoot you down, saying, don't go forward with it. I just think that we need to, you need to start looking, you know, what, what are some different ways to do it? You found Franklin County, and that's, that's something that, you know, maybe we could start talking how that's going to work and all that. I'm just not there yet, Mr. Bracken, on that. And, and it really, the, the problem is, is your complexity of your process with metals, glasses, aluminum, paper, styrofoam. And I know you have an end product at Marpan. I, I got that. But I know that's a long ways to transport all those materials. And did you have like a millionaire set, I fixed to stroke you out of check for a couple hundred thousand dollars to start this project? We may have felt a little bit better there, but basically, we're, we're, we're starting this business off of getting customers on the internet. And that was, I had, I, I'll just be honest, I had a, a problem with that. I don't want you to go away with the recycling thing. I, I love, we love recycling. I even heard the first, first mention of it. We were going to use some of our, our citizens that with disabilities to help with the sorting. And I, I said, you know, what a great.
You don't need a whole lot of skill sets.
Yeah, well, you know, that, but that's, that's, the, you know, the Publix model is, is, is what I was thinking in my head. You know, have Publix employees, and it's a good for those, for that population. So, you know, I was all on board starting there, but that's a huge, huge undertaking. So that's my take on it, Richard, is, is I, I think that, you know, it needs to go a little bit farther in the planning stages. And, and, and I've never had the end. You never told me what Marpan's giving you on your business model. You know, how much are they giving you per pound? And how long will that sit out there? So let's say you collected styrofoam. How long are we going to sit with that container, styro, just styrofoam in a container before we take it? You know, there's a lot of steps that they do, and it's a very complex thing. Now, didn't we mention meeting with BCC? Did that happen? Jeremy, didn't we talk to him?
I, I sent, uh, uh, Mr. Swainsey a note asking him about the interest of subleasing some of the transfer stations so we can set that up as of site. That'd be the fourth time I reached out to him and heard nothing. So I'm.
I'm going to defer that because I, I just think, you know, going forward, they're in the business of it. They're not doing it. They chose not to do it. But if you're choosing to do it, some type of partnership, if they chose to or to help you with this because they've been in the business for a while and other things. And so that was, that was just something I said. Jeremy?
You want to add something? Go ahead.
Yeah, yeah. And if the commissioners don't have any other comment, I just. We, we're going on three months now on this particular issue. And, and some, and the letter that I wrote to Richard and his wife was following when we started learning that they're starting setting up the recycling business a month ago in the county. It was October twenty seventh. It was a letter just to cease and desist and to, as I'd mentioned to Richard a couple of times. And, and I applaud them for their efforts because they obviously are very passionate about the issue. And I know you commissioners want to help any business and additionally recycling. But a couple of things I had addressed in my letter, which were, first of all, I encouraged him to speak to an attorney so he could familiar with the state law. Second, I encouraged him to refer to our contract with BCC, which he's done. We have ordinances, flow control ordinance in Gulf County. Told him, I'll make sure you're mindful of that, and also a business license. You put a business license in, in a few years ago. Not only was it for watermelons and pumpkins to be sold on the side of the road in the summertime, but it was there more so that you could protect the public for public safety and, and, and consumers for something of this nature. I mean, this is collection of recyclables or recoverable materials. So it's imperative that Mr. Bracken has a business license. And the first thing he does is secure that from Gulf County to run a business in the county. And as I sit here today, I still don't know that they have a business license. I, I'm, maybe you applied for it.
It's, we applied for it.
Okay, so they've applied for one. And generally, it is ministerial as the term that Mr. Costin used in his letter that he wrote to Mr. Bracken. But other times, it's not. This isn't pumpkins. This isn't watermelons. This is a collection business throughout the county that you issued a franchise right to BCC five years ago. They have the exclusive right to do that. They have communicated to the county, Mr. Bracken, that they're not want, seeking to do that, and the county has not required them to do that. Which, to Michael's point, is if, if the county today decides they want to go into recycling, then you need to advertise it and put it out there. And then you can put it out there and award it to a, a vendor. But there's a lot of layers of complexity that I think Commissioner Pridgen just touched on, which is, and I, and I used the word during the port meeting that we went to try to help Mr. Bracken, you know, and try to give him some guidance. Not only is the logistics and the site a concern, the, the establishment of the business, the contractual rights, the protection of the consumers, the license to operate, the certification that you're required to have to, to collect recoverable materials. And then we talk about the ten percent, whether it's contaminated product or it's not. Your solid flow, your flow control ordinance in Gulf County does not allow the stuff to leave the county. And so it's a question of, I understand they have now a site. And I didn't know they had a site in Franklin County, but I believe they're advertising in Franklin County to collect recoverable materials. So now your question for you commissioners is you actually have product being collected, potentially in Gulf County, and being taken out of the county, which to me, on the ordinance that you have, potentially is a violation of your flow control. You have materials, if they are contaminated more than ten percent, leaving the county. So it's a violation of your ordinance. And then there's a lot of language there for that. So there's a lot of layers of complexity to this beyond just the contract that we have. And as I've tried to work with Mr. Bracken, I've encouraged him, the letter that I wrote to him was a page and a half, but it was more of guidance and to consult an attorney, which he's done. And again, I applaud their efforts, but there's a lot of layers beyond just having a license to operate, a certification from the state, franchise rights, collection ability throughout the county. And these are questions that you all would ask. And if there's a business license and it's turned down by the county, which it sounds as though it possibly could, but I don't want to project, if it is, then Mr. Bracken and his company would come back to you all and have that ability to appeal and say, what do you need? And so when you would then list and enumerate the thirty things that I've heard in the last three months of the things that you're looking for, where is it? Where's your lease? Do you have a license? Are you certified? What is your capability to perform? Have we bid it out? Do we want to go into recycling? Are we going to advertise to vendors? All those things need to be answered if you're going to have this business in Gulf County. I can say this, BCC is certified. BCC does have a contract. BCC does have franchise rights. BCC does have a location within your transfer facility that you built several years ago. So those boxes have all been checked. If they're not going to do it and you elect to go into recycling in Gulf County, then the first step is to make that election, and then we'll go out and advertise it. In the meantime, again, Mr. Bracken and his wife want to go down this path. My concern now is that we're on this, three, three months into this, is you have the public, your constituents, expecting a service from a business that's not licensed in Gulf County. I don't know their insurance. I don't know their certification. I don't know any of those things, and nor do you. And so that's why you put that ordinance in place to protect the constituents of Gulf County. So we're so far down the line in this discussion, and like I said, it's to accommodate businesses because I think you want to help businesses start up. I think you want to protect and preserve the environment. Like, we've had a lot of public interest. But there's a lot of questions that you don't have answers for. And one of them, right out of the box, is find out about the business. And I think Commissioner Pridgen at the Port Authority mentioned that. I, I don't want to quote the chairman of the Port Authority, but he said, we have a great partnership with the county. We don't want to get out in front of them or do anything to frustrate that relationship. So until we find out from the county where they stand on it, we don't want to approve the lease. I think that was a good paraphrase, okay? So the Port Authority is not going to give them the site as it stands right now. They don't have a license to operate in the city of Port St. Joe. I don't know that they have any relationship with the city of Weewaw, and they certainly don't have a license with Gulf County. So before we get down that path of all these other issues, I think that would probably be the first thing. And then you all can voice your opinion about recycling. And I could go on for another half hour, but I'm not going to do that to y'all. So, Mr. Chairman, I'll take, give it back to you.
All right. Any questions, commissioners, for Mr. Bracken? We good? Got anything else you need to add? All right, um, I, I, you, you asking us for?
No, and I, I guess I, I need to come back with evidence of certification and the business license.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Bracken, if I can, and like I said, my, my efforts have been trying to assist you to get to the point where you can get an answer for the commission. In our last meeting afterward, we spoke about BCC. That is our contractor. It is specific, it's lined out in our contract. And if, if, if we can assist and try to have Mr. Swayze reach out and communicate with you, you've tried. I know you've tried. I've seen that. It's documented. And the contractor, our franchisee, possibly can give you some answer if, if that's a site that they're willing to give to you, if not. But all the questions that you've heard up to this point, in the last ninety days, from the elected officials, from the various agencies, are the questions that you're going to get on that business license. So hopefully you can gather that all up and then give them some meaningful content when you do that.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. All right, before we move out to, uh, we're going to item nine, I think, Ms. Williams, you're going to handle this request.
Yes, sir. This is a football league out of Weewaw Hidjika. I believe they're similar to Port St. Joe's Gene Raffield League. They're just requesting a fee waiver for the Honeyville Community Center for their end of season award ceremony. And I was able to find where the fee was waived last year. Just wanted to get permission to waive that fee.
All right, thank you, ma'am. All right, entertaining motion to waive the fee.
I'll, I'll make that motion as long as they clean it up to your specifications. Second.
All right, motion by Commissioner Hudson, second by Commissioner Macron. Any further board discussion? Anyone in the public on this? Any opposition to the motion? All right, motion passed five and oh. All right, Ms. Rhodes, you got any public comment?
Yes, sir. Christie McElroy. I'll need five minutes. I'm speaking on behalf of Panhandle Transparency Partnership, please. I'm glad we're talking about the environment, and I just gave the clerk a, a letter that was November eighteenth, two thousand twenty-four as a response to a letter was November 18th, 2024, as a response to a letter based off of a general permit that the city of Port St. Joe filed for November 13th, 2024, for a permit for the 8th Street to 10th Street work that was unpermitted. With this letter, it's 11 pages, I'm gonna give a copy to Jack and then send you guys the hard copy or the PDF file of this over email. The cart was put before the horse. And this project began on October the 18th. We went to the city of Port St. Joe on numerous occasions, because historically, they have been trying to get permits for this project. The city of Port St. Joe said, based off of their information, they didn't need permits. Well, this letter clearly says that they did. So we've been documenting all of this. At the last meeting that I attended, I talked about this, that this project wasn't permitted. And I was concerned that if the county was doing the work along with a couple of contractors, this was unpermitted work. So here is the proof that it was unpermitted work. And one of the things that, that DEP clearly stated is you needed to go through the Corps of Engineers, because it is a tightly driven canal system. And the, the photographs that we have and the turbidity in that canal system is unbelievable. So I think it's really important that y'all all know that your staff did unpermitted work. And this is the letter to prove that. The last thing I'm going to just bring up is, I talked about this 2007 Northwest Florida Water Management District report. At the time, the existing member that is still on this, that is still on that board, Northwest Florida Water Management District, is George Roberts. So I put this in the record before. I'm going to scan this and also send you a PDF copy of this. And Jack, I would like to meet with you afterwards, just to show you exactly what this report says. It clearly says it was due to the growth and the potential for saltwater intrusion is why we went off the aquifer system. This report is not just for Gulf County, it is also for Franklin County. This also, that I've put in the record before, is Gulf County's proposed water supply. And it goes into the fact that, you know, we've built a water plant at the city of Port St. Joe that has the capacity to pump 6 million gallons a day. That's what, that's what it has the potential to do. We're pumping right now a million and a half gallons per day that comes out of the Chipola River. So again, I'm not trying to, you know, give my opinion. I'm just going by the facts, the facts of a permit that should have been pulled for 8th and 10th Street, as it pertains to that massive project in a waterway and next to a wetland, which I discussed with y'all at the last meeting as well, as well as this 2007 report, that this is why we went off the aquifer system and went to the Chipola River. So you all will be able to see this letter from DEP, because I've just handed the copy to the clerk, and I will be sending you a PDF file. I'm very concerned about this. It was unpermitted work. It was unpermitted work. And we, as a neighborhood of Forest Park, should have been included in this process. Unpermitted work.
Thank you, ma'am.
Robert Branch.
I'll be brief. What you have here, the same copy I got, and what I found here is, kind of back up with Ms. McElroy, said, looking for this permit, this is supposed to be public record. When somebody applies for a permit, you can actually go to Northwest Florida site or DEP and find a permit. And do it during this process, and I'm a, I've been in this neighborhood 35 years, so I'll jump to the, my, my very concerns is the same thing she spoke about. We all should be concerned. Now, the first page you have, when I got out looking at the permit, I spoke about the mounts. Y'all have applied for 12, and that was talked about earlier. So let me back up what I said. Particular piece of property, 06236097R, is Cessna Drive. And y'all, this board applied, part of y'all's job, applied for this permit for two, approximately 30 by 80, submitted in a culverted stormwater crossing to Cessna Drive. And Mr. Hammond, when you applied for it to Northwest Florida, you, you, in your application, you said applicant proposes to construct two culverted ditch crossing on pre-existing roadside stormwater ditch, the county owns Cessna Drive. This project serves emergency access for undeveloped land, wildfire, and hurricane mitigation activities. But actually, this permit that y'all paid for and the, the culvert is, is going to this Buffer Preserve subdivision. That's what I spoke about earlier when I come up here. So y'all applied for a permit for Northwest Florida in January, actually February, and it was kicked over to DEP. And the price on that is actually $250 to DEP. So DEP approved this in March of this year. It is not for what you said on this application. It's to get this development, these two culverted things to their development on your county right of way. That's what I spoke about, you know, earlier in my tension. So you have all the documentation, the same thing I'm looking at here. I will challenge y'all to look at it. And I'm gonna go back to this land here, that this is adjoining for the record, is Buffer Preserve, Palm Breeze, it ties into this subdivision. Now, it looks like with these, that y'all actually paid for this permit for these two culverts and installed a permit for this subdivision. Two culvert, million dollars, my guess. When, when the public request is done for that, and, and I'll, I'll check on that, that'll be my next tension. You're not, you're not doing, you're not doing this for the people, you're doing it for a certain developer. Everything, everything y'all have here is what I got. And that's, that's, for some, that's fraud. I don't see it any other way. Total fraud.
Thanks, sir.
Appreciate your time.
Yes, sir.
I'll, I'll respond to a couple of things, if I can, Mr. Chairman. So, because, you know, just a straight out lie.
You go ahead and have a seat, Mr.-
This is a state and federal grant.
Hold on, hold on, let him go on, you can go have a seat.
You're done.
It's amazing how everybody-
He just gonna talk. He just, he just gonna respond to whatever you said.
I want to guess somewhere around three years ago, we got a state and federal grant to pave that for the hangar folks, and it's changed two or three times, but, but to the end of that road, a private developer added to that road to do that. So we got a state grant and a DEO grant, and we came in under budget to run power, water, sewer, and pave the road. Private developer did sewer, but we did the water and the, and the, and the power and the, and the road paved, and we've closed it out, and we're under budget. That, you know, long before this subdivision came in, we certainly haven't done any, any culverts on private property. So getting back to the other one, and I assume the county attorney's gonna tell you, you can't talk to somebody that's suing you. So, so this, after the fact meeting with individuals that are suing you, probably not gonna happen. But the, the gist is, the, the situation with the water, the water management paid for both of those wells, they're putting us another well in. Again, things change, but the, but the crux to the matter on that report that we're getting back on is that it was saltwater intrusion, and they wouldn't extend. And they've also told the, the city that they won't extend their situation too. So apples and oranges, I will, I will promise you this, I'm not gonna put your staff in a situation to work illegally on any project. We work 99% of the time, we don't have to have a permit to replace a culvert, to replace the same size culvert or one up. And again, we were assisting the city of Port St. Joe, but we didn't break any laws, and your folks didn't work, you know, in violation of the law. And I think that when it's all said and done, that'll be proven out. That's all I got to say on that.
All right, Ms. Rose, you got anyone else?
I had two more, but they've already spoken on those issues, on the future restoration.
Okay, we good? All right.
So back and clean up, a couple, couple reminders. Your, your December meeting has been canceled. Your special meeting will be on December the 17th at nine o'clock. I know we've got to go, but I want to tell you that we've had another good year, we've had another safe year. We've got a lot of things to be thankful for, thankful for the, for the new folks on the board, and look forward to working with y'all in the, and through the holidays and in the new year. And when y'all get ready to set this time, the only constraint we have with these, again, I think it's a great idea to have this retreat probably outside of this room, it can be bigger and more relaxed. The difficulty we have, both with the clerk and with us, is the, you know, the recording. We've got some pretty good equipment here. If we can figure that out some other way, that, that a, a more relaxed atmosphere will be more, much more conducive to an all-day meeting, which sounds like this might be an all-day meeting. So that's all I have.
Commissioners, y'all got anything before we go?
No, sir.
All right, take this opportunity, thank everyone for coming to the Board of County Commissioners meeting, have a good. Miss, she got a speaking for? Hold on. Come on up, come on up, we can, come on up, Ms. Fran. Go ahead and introduce yourself, please.
Fran Valanti, East 30A. Hello, new ones. Uh, I'm still waiting for the no passing zone on East 30A. Uh, the vehicles are very violent, there's nowhere to jump out of the way, they're passing each other at high speeds. There's, there's nowhere to remove yourself in a situation where they're passing at high speeds, both vehicles. I'm still waiting for that no passing zone with the double yellow lines and reflectors, and I don't hear back from anybody. And also, I, my suggestion for the, what you call an overpass, is to not do that overpass, close it up, and move the stop sign that people keep running over to the left as you're going back to town, another six or eight feet, and just let them use that side access area, move the stop sign over, and just widen that middle intersection lane, there's three of them. The middle one with the stop sign that the wind keeps running over, just move it a little bit over to the west. And do not do the overpass, there's no reason for that road that you've cleared. It goes nowhere, and you must have done it for some one certain person, because no one's asking to be driving over to Dollar General at high speeds and crowded traffic. The other issue is the living shoreline. I ran into someone at Franklin, and they said that Conservation Corps and Aner and Anita Wood were responsible for making that happen there, and it didn't really cost them anything, they said, for the county, or a little, I'm not sure exactly, but that's what, what I was hearing from running into one of the county officials that work at EOC. Oh, why can't we do a living shoreline on the rest of the coastline? We need it very badly, and priority needs to be placed. Forget about all these other things, courthouse doesn't matter. I don't have any, I mean, it could be a garden reception place. We don't need to be putting money into stuff that doesn't matter, what's priority is our coastline right now. The living shoreline needs to be on all of the shoreline, from the county line, as far as you can go. I know you can't do it in deep water, but it would help. And, and it's not hard to do, and why aren't you working on it?
Ms. Fran, you, I mean, you can't say the courthouse doesn't matter, that, that does matter to those people that are located in that district. That means the world to those people. You don't, you don't know the history of, of those, those people that-
Focus on what's important. Priority is the shoreline right now. You have a solution for the shallow water, it's the living shoreline. It's a no-brainer.
That's your time.
It's a win-win.
That's your time, Ms. Fran.
Will you look into it?
Hey, Fran, thank you. We are looking into it. It's just not ready yet. I want to bring it in December. I had, had some conversations about that, they had done it in Franklin. I know what you're talking about. There's a process, so let me, let me finish. It is one of the many things that we do. Courthouse is something that, that is very important to a lot of us. The living shoreline is just as important too, okay? And it, you're gonna seek, I'm gonna, we're gonna bring some more information back on that. It's a process that you go through. They have been out here, they started looking at some of our shoreline, so it is a process. So feel comfortable about that. We, we are looking at shoreline, okay?
You could make it a formal garden and tear it down. It's costing insurance, millions of dollars.
Gotcha, yes, ma'am. Thank you.
It's worth it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fran, that's your time.
There's a place called Goodwood Gardens, which would be a nice model. And they collect rent for banquets, it's outside, function place. That would work.
Thank you, Ms. Fran.
You don't need to be spending all that money. And you fix all the other roads, but you don't give me a no pass zone, at least. Do you know how fast they go there? We're shouldering the burden of all of the traffic on the east end. We live there, we're locals.